Over your heart and again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I don't know if this is an invocation, but I just know that I'm really getting tired of standing up here every two weeks and having our hearts broken by the atrocities that are happening in this world on a weekly basis. Most recently, San Antonio, Texas. Week before that, Colorado. A friend of mine in town, Carolyn Burcom's nephew was killed in the attack on Walmart in Colorado. It's affecting all of us. My daughter lives in San Antonio. I mean, it's scary when you think of what's happening in the world. I don't know what we can do as a community, other than band together. And I hate the fact that what is going on is, it puts fear and the terror of hearts of all of us. And, you know, now we're fearful of things. And that's, it's just a shame. I know as a community, we are united, but as a world and as the United States of America, I'm just personally tired of people creating tyranny and fear in the hearts of men. And I don't know what you can do about it, but if you have any ideas, we can pray to God, but there has to be other action because this is just sinful that every week, every council member now, council meeting, we're having to open up with this kind of thing. So, in God's name, we pray. Amen. And just for another moment, I'm sorry. And I'd like to just pause for a moment for Frank Weber and Robin Barlow, who passed away within the last week. Please be seated. Now onto more pleasant things.
You want it again?
Please.
We'd like to start our council meeting off tonight with a recognition. We would like to call Mr. Norris Whitey Mendenhall up to our podium, if you would. And as Whitey is coming up to join us, we will begin our presentation with some words from the president and CEO of the Catalina Island Conservancy, Mr. Tony Budravich.
How are you, sir? Well, I wanted to thank council and mayor for the opportunity, but Whitey Mendenhall's been a great community member. I think many of you in town know that he does great things for many people and is well-liked by all. But at the conservancy, since 1994, he's been out there contributing weekly work on this island to make it a better place. Planting trees, working in native plant nursery, getting seed for us. Every time a tree goes in the ground, Peter Dixon, a resident who works with them regularly, says, "The first thing you hear Whitey say is, 'Grow, baby, grow.'" So because of that statement and the outstanding enthusiasm he gives towards every plant, there's an award that we give to somebody who helps us on the horticulture of this island every year. And it was basically started because of Whitey, and he's won it twice himself. So, pretty amazing. So, almost 4,200 hours of time. He's like a clock, with or without daylight savings. He's out there making this island a better place. And I just wanted to send my personal thank you, and the love of the room is felt by all. So, thank you, Whitey.
And we will also hear from the current president of the Avalon Rotary Club, Mr. Bryce Knoll.
And I'm saying this on behalf of the Rotary Club, but it's more on behalf of myself. This is long overdue. So, as a precursor, I told Whitey a couple of weeks ago that he needed to show up at a city council meeting, and I did not tell him why. And just like that, he said yes. And he said, "If you need me, I will be there." So, Whitey, this night is about you. You have been instrumental in changing my life for the better by being that stalwart, kind, caring individual every single day. You think nothing of yourself, and you give everything to everyone else. And that is something that is underappreciated and undervalued in this world. And thank you.
And I'm going to try to do this without a tear. And for myself, council member Cassidy, I'm standing here before you on behalf of our entire city council. Council member Joe Sampson, council member Ollie Olson, council member Richard Hernandez, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tim Olson, Mayor Marshall. And I would like to read to you a proclamation from the City of Avalon on behalf of our council and our city staff. This is a proclamation of the City of Avalon recognizing Norris Whitey Mendenhall for his volunteer work. Whereas in 1967, Norris Whitey Mendenhall moved to Avalon as the manager of Safeway, and not long after, he met his future wife, Joy, who's with us here tonight. Upon retiring from Safeway, he took two part-time jobs, one of which was the clerk at our local bank. Today, after more than 25 years at the bank, he continues to be a monument for consistent quality work. Whitey has served this community for many years in numerous capacities, including 35 years as an active member of the Avalon Rotary Club, 23 years of volunteering at the Santa Catalina Island Conservancy, in which he has logged 4,184 volunteer hours. The Catalina Island Conservancy has an award named the Whitey Mendenhall Grow, Baby Grow Award, named after him for his exceptional volunteerism. Whitey has won that award twice since its inception. During his long and productive lifetime, he has earned the respect and affection of people from all walks of life and all ages because of his knowledge, integrity, wisdom, and community spirit. In the 50 years that Whitey has lived in Avalon, he is still serving his community well. These years have been marked by exemplary dedication to the best interest of this community. Now, therefore, please join us in thanking Whitey for his distinguished service and dedicating his time and resource for our island community. Thank you. And Whitey, we would love it if you wanted to say a few words.
I just want to thank everybody, you know, for their support. And the famous words that Bryce and I discussed many times ago, the act of kindness was a wonderful thing that was taught to me many years ago. And I'm going to continue to do that as many times as I've said hello to everybody, or I said, "Give a big hug," or a kiss, or a handshake. That was meant to me, that this is my act of kindness to everybody that I have. And I appreciate those people that do support me many times. All my bosses, all my fellow Rotarians, okay? Thank you very much.
And, do you have any walls in your house?
I told all these fine people that showed up for Whitey that they would be in and out fairly quickly, so there might be a mass act of this, but thank you, guys.
They can leave, because I know they run home and turn on their television, so. I don't know where you're going to put all this stuff, but anyway. Thank you.
You'll have to ask my wife.
She'll have to redecorate. Okay. Announcements and written communications. This is from the United States House of Representatives. How about roll? Congressman Alan Lowenthal, a certificate of recognition. Okay. Let's take the roll call to make sure we're all sitting here. Norris Whitey Mendenhall, volunteer for the Catalina Island Conservancy. For formality. In honor of your outstanding contribution and years of service to the Catalina Island Councilmember Cassidy.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez. Conservancy, your lasting dedication for 4,185 lifetime hours protecting the outdoors,
Here.
Councilmember Sampson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Olson.
Here.
And Mayor Mars. Here. and your commitment to the environment is greatly appreciated. Okay. Are there any announcements and written communications? Alan Lowenthal, Member of Congress.
I have none.
Mayor, there are a couple of written communications that relate to items that are
There you go.
on the agenda. They will be mentioned or referenced at the time of the agenda item comes forward.
Okay, perfect. And I received something in an email that I'll also give to Denise, but it's regarding Get the family up here. one of the items on the agenda also. Here's Olivia. Okay. City manager report. And David?
I just have two items, mayor. The first is my understanding, as of today, is that there is an agreement between CISA and the homeowners regarding the Vons startup matter. If Vons is able to make sure that, we're able to make sure that Vons has paid all appropriate fees and met the requirements necessary for startup construction, it is possible, I'm told, and correct me, Ms. Cook, if I'm incorrect, that construction could start on site this month.
Wow, okay.
Oh, I did, the second thing was, I just wanted to mention, I was invited to a conversation by Tony Budravich of the conservancy. And it was one of the most exciting conversations that included people from Southern California, Edison, from the Environmental Protection Agency. And it's about a process, and I'm just going to give you just a quick commentary. It literally takes waste carbon and turns that through a high heat process that, please don't ask me to explain, but it turns it into either one of different products. It takes agricultural waste, industrial waste, municipal waste, forestry, sewage, sludge, algae, coal, garbage. And it can literally be at a site and convert that into gas, engine generating gas, fuel cell product, steam. It can turn it into a useful product. And we, on a preliminary basis, are talking about how this might be applicable particularly at our solid waste site. So, that was an exciting conversation. I appreciate Mr. Budravich inviting my participation.
That's great. Thank you. See, the attorney report.
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Councilmember reports. Who would like to start?
I have none.
I have one. I have one, just one announcement tonight. And it comes in the form of an apology. And bear with me for a minute, because the last meeting, I said some things that were uncouncilman-like. They were rather disrespectful, and I don't think they came from the right place for my heart. And I want to make this apology to the public utility that I had called out. I want to make this apology to the community that I represent, and also to the council that I sit next to. And I say this with a heavy heart because I feel terrible about it. I misspoke some words, and I didn't act respectfully and with dignity and kindness. And what I learned from my mistakes is, I always do. And tonight, it's kind of striking to me that Whitey was here, and we gave an acknowledgement to him for his sincerity and his kindness and the love that he shows for the community, which is what my job should be as well. And I felt like I did not reach out to the community in a very good way, in a positive way, and I learned from it. And I will change my ways from this, and I ask you for your, I ask that you would forgive me for this, for the way I spoke. It will never happen again, and I will represent you with kindness, dignity, sincerity. And in any conflict, there will be resolution in a peaceful and dignified way. And from this point on, I'm just going to say that, once again, I say this with a heavy heart. And it's not something that's ever going to happen again. And I appreciate you guys giving me the chance to clear my conscience on this. Thank you, mayor. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, council member. That takes a big man to do that. Thank you.
I just had a couple of shout-outs, actually, for the city crews. All that work going down with the streets and everything. I know it was a lot of inconvenience to everybody. Bob, you guys did a great job communicating. That was great. Dan, everybody seems to be working all in sync here, and everything looks good in the city. Lot of cleanup going on, and you guys are doing a great job. Just keep up the good work and pass the good word on to your workers. Did have just one little complaint about the play area out there where the new awnings are. There was a bunch of kids climbing on the top of your new awnings out there, and maybe we could have, maybe the harbor guys can maybe keep their eye out for it, and maybe the sheriffs could maybe patrol a little bit and get out there. But they were climbing up on top of the awnings up there at night. But other than that, you guys are doing a great job, and I appreciate it. Thank you, guys, all the city workers.
Constantine wire wrapped around those poles.
Yeah. That's it.
That was very nice.
I don't have something quite so bright and happy. Couple of people approached me about some illicit drug sales taking place in the evening time at both Casino Point and Island Plaza. It's kind of like a drug supermarket, from what I've heard. Not being a participant, I wouldn't know for a fact, but if we could have the deputies do some sweeps by there and try to cut this out, because we don't need drug sales, illicit drugs in Avalon at any time. And I also echo Richard's accolades for the public work crew. Good job down there.
Yes, very good. And the paving crew. I think they were, CNC, they were fantastic. I can't believe they got everything done right before the triathlon. It worked out really well, and they've done an excellent job. So, thank you, and thank you. I know you're on it. I want to remind everybody about Congressman Alan Lowenthal will be coming on November 18th, 10:30 to 12:30, up at the school auditorium. He would like you to join him for a town hall to discuss the issues facing Catalina, Southern California, and our nation. And he will provide a congressional update and answer your questions. So, I hope you can take the time to go up there and speak with him. They also, if you have questions or issues you would like him to address, if you could let him know beforehand so that he can prepare for some things, you can contact him at lowenthal@mail.house.gov. So, I don't know if this is on our website, but we will put it on there, and we hope to see you all out there on the 18th.
It will be in the update, and we will place it on the
What time is it?
Website if it is not already. We'll save it.
Thank you. 10:30 to 12:30 a.m.
Thank you.
P.M. Okay. And city hall will be closed on Friday, November 10th, in honor of Veterans Day.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Do you know, is there a, is there something planned at the Veterans Park for Friday?
I have
Joe, do you know?
Saturday at 11:00.
It's 11 o'clock.
On Saturday at 11:00 a.m.? Okay.
I believe it's going to be up at the cemetery, yeah.
Usually, they do one down there and the other one up there, huh?
Just a bit of veterans.
Oh, it's the veterans? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Veterans ceremony Saturday, 11 o'clock, Veterans Park. Okay. City manager and I went to Supervisor Han's State of the County address a couple of weeks ago. It was very well-attended. It was in berth 93 over in San Pedro. It was just a kind of a rah-rah, you know, not so much what is going to happen, but what has happened, especially in light of her father years ago and whatever. But it was lovely. We had a mental health meeting via the telephone with LA County Mental Health, members of the hospital, Jason Paray and two of his staff people, and people from LA County Mental Health, or Linda Chico and somebody else. And we talked about trying to get mental health services back here, because those are free services to the community. So, they would like a needs assessment to be done first, reach out to the community, and do some public meetings and that kind of thing. So, hopefully, that will go rather quickly. As I said, it's been 10 to 15 years since we've had those services here. Then on Friday, if all goes well with Veterans Day, doesn't get too confused, Councilmember Cassidy and I, and Judge Mirich, hopefully Captain Hawking, and a representative from the school, and Rhonda will be talking about the teen court concept, which we all seem to be very much in favor for, which would provide consequences to young people for doing things inappropriately. So, we hope to be moving forward on that as well. The other thing I would like to mention is, and I don't know if it has to come back to the city council, I would like to talk about changing the time of our council meetings until 5:00 or 5:30. There's a lot of advantages to that, and I can rattle them off, or else if we have to put it as an action, then you can write the advantages. The disadvantages, some will say, was, will be that some people work, but what I find, if somebody is here on a matter that really impacts their life as a businessperson or whatever, they're going to be here. So, especially with the time change, you know, it's dark when we walk over here now, and for those people that are a little older, like myself, that those of us like to go to bed a little earlier, this would maybe, instead of getting out at 11, we could maybe get out at 10. So, I don't know how we should proceed with that. If
If I could, that would require an ordinance change. Or ordinance requires, says that meetings start at 6:00. So, if it's the council direction, I could bring an ordinance to change the date. Or if you want to have a discussion, and then give me direction for an ordinance.
Discussion now? Or discussion later, and then an ordinance? You're saying discuss it now?
You could direct, you could direct me to prepare an ordinance for action at the next meeting. Or it can be just a discussion item that we put on the next agenda. Because you may want to consider what time.
Okay.
Input from everybody?
Sure, okay.
So, we'll bring it back to the discussion.
Okay. Discussion next time. Okay. Thank you.
And were you also, were you also talking about maybe changing the order?
Yes. Does that have to be in the ordinance as well, changing the order? For example, if we want to do consent calendar first.
Oh, no.
Okay. But we can just, okay.
No.
All righty. Thank you. That's all I have. Okay, oral communication. This is an opportunity from people from the community to speak on an item that is not on the agenda. You will be limited to three minutes, and no action will be taken. Is there anybody?
Good evening. Leslie Warner, 306 Whitley. Ever since the last meeting, I've really been very concerned about your memorandum of understanding and this huge push to build 190 units in town. So, I asked for some information, but before I go on to that, I would like to know, the closed session tonight, conference with real property negotiators, you're selling the property you own at 206 East Whitley? Are you allowed to tell us what you're doing?
Let me just say this, mayor, because there were offers made unsolicited, and we have an obligation, if there are such things, to consider them. That's my, maybe I have said too much, but that's, there have been some unsolicited comments to us, offers, and those will be discussed.
So, just in light of the housing that you're working on, you actually own some property.
Yes.
Wow. Why would you sell it? So, enough being said, I didn't know if I could comment on closed session, but
You, member of the public, can always make a comment on the closed session.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. And then I was able to get some more information about the Housing Authority exclusive negotiating agreement with CNC that you approved on December 6, 2016. And obviously, this is driving this memorandum of understanding, this push for this housing. I would like to know if you had a market analysis provided within 60 days of the agreement, and that you all understand that market analysis. Moving forward, it said developer to evaluate potential affordable housing development sites, including the use of smart growth principles. In my mind, smart growth means, do we have the water? Can we handle the trash? All of that. Where is that information? Because I haven't seen any research or any studies about this coming out for us to see, and I think we deserve to know about that. Also, was there a public outreach? Did you have a big meeting telling the town, "This is what we're considering. We're going to build, we're going to tear down Tremont Hall. We're going to build at Los Casitas, where Island Company is. How do you feel about this? What's your input?" Did that happen, and in the timely fashion that it was supposed to? And then have they been keeping you updated on a monthly basis of everything that's going on? And I don't understand one of the negotiating factors. It says, "The Housing Authority shall not negotiate with any other person or entity regarding the use of Housing Authority funds during the term of this agreement." So, just want to be clear that that hasn't been happening, because the Island Company's there, Edison's there, you know, it's all kind of vague to us, and I'm just, would like you to revisit this agreement and be sure that you are in compliance, that the developer's in compliance, and that you slow down on 190 units in Avalon. Thank you.
Just let me mention, mayor, if I may, and I appreciate the comments, and I know that there's interest in the community on this. We have made at least two or three reports in the management update. We've also had, there was a public discussion early in the process, but there has not been one made more recently. Also, that the discussion points, though not firm, though not approved, have been presented publicly to the council, but it is understandable that people with projects, where you have projects that are large, that there's going to be questions, and there can be no commitments made by this city in advance of any environmental analysis report. The issue of water is, of course, always an important issue. All those things have to be part of the California Environmental Quality Act on any project or projects that go forward. There's also, as was not mentioned, was the issue of new wells that the Island Company has talked about putting into production in the canyon. Those have to be evaluated to determine if there's sufficient water over sufficient time, and what the draw would be on other supply of water, and how it might affect or not affect saltwater intrusion into the basin. And so, the question is timely, and I will ask CNC in regard to their agreement to provide an update, a written update on what they're doing, and we, of course, will keep you informed of what we're doing.
Yes. I understand the city owns rental housing with vacant units they are considering selling. The city owns the land and property right now and can make an income renting this highly desirable commodity. At the same time, our new young teachers cannot find year-round housing. We have at least five teachers in winter rentals this year, and eight teachers commuting daily on the boat. I don't have to tell you how difficult it is to move into your house the first week of school and be packing to leave the last week of school. When I taught in New Zealand years ago in a small town, there were two units for teachers adjacent to the school. When I taught in Two Harbors, housing was set aside for the teacher. If our community wants teachers committed to our families and their children, this would be one valuable way this property could be used. As you consider adding housing for our future workforce for the Island Company, please consider how you could welcome a stable, lasting workforce for our school in the near future. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, I've had conversation with Chris Lounsbury. The issue of housing that this fine person raises is an issue that affects not just low to moderate income. It affects middle income. It affects teachers. It affects doctors, as we've recently learned, with physicians in the hospital. It also affects managers and mid-managers in the city. The Island Company project that is proposed is fully solely funded by their resources, and it's to address problems that they have with workforce housing for theirs, for their people, which now are, they believe, insufficient, and we haven't yet documented all of that. And so, the point that the young lady, excuse me, Lindsay, Ms. Lindsay, I apologize. Point is an excellent point, and really, there needs to be a consortium
We have at least five teachers in winter rentals this year, and eight teachers commuting daily on the boat. I don't have to tell you how difficult it is to move into your house the first week of school and be packing to leave the last week of school. When I taught in New Zealand years ago in a small town, there were two units for teachers adjacent to the school. When I taught in Two Harbors, housing was set aside for the teacher. If our community wants teachers committed to our families and their children, this would be one valuable way this property could be used. As you consider adding housing for our future workforce for the Island Company, please consider how you could welcome a stable, lasting workforce for our school in the near future. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, I've had conversation with Chris Lounsbury. The issue of housing that this fine person raises is an issue that affects not just low to moderate income, it affects middle income, it affects teachers, it affects doctors, as we've recently learned, with physicians in the hospital. It also affects managers and mid-managers in the city. The Island Company project that is proposed is fully solely funded by their resources, and it's to address problems that they have with workforce housing for theirs, for their people, which now are, they believe, insufficient, and we haven't yet documented all of that. And so the point that the young lady, excuse me, Lindsay, Ms. Lindsay, I apologize. Point is, is an excellent point, and really, there needs to be a consortium, a consortium of schools, the hospital, the, and the city, to look at other opportunities. We're way behind in the area of workforce and affordable housing, and housing for people like teachers and others, and doctors. You know, we can't attract doctors unless they have place, and when you learn, without mentioning names, that one doctor who can't find housing for her family, what does he or she have to do? They have to go somewhere, I don't know what they do, maybe they pop up a tent on the beach?
We lose their expertise.
We lose their expertise. And so the point that Ms. Lindsay made was, is a very important one, and has to be a part of the entire strategy of delivering of housing for all groups, not adding per se, people, but giving quality housing. That's why there's an item on your agenda tonight that addresses quality housing issues, and about how do we see that rentals are of a quality that are safe, sanitary, and decent, as the federal law has stated since the early, late 40s. So you're right, it's a very good question, and it would be a topic for discussion by the council as a body in sometime, or the authority in sometime in the near future, if you like.
Well, I think for me, I would like to see on our next agenda, which it sounds like our next meeting is December 4, I'd like to ask that CNC come back to the council and give us an update, which will have been nearly that one year of the one-year contract that we gave to them. Because the points that were made in the contract have not been fulfilled to the council. They have not come back and presented a market study, or the smart growth study. They have not come back, and when we talked about this, and I did, in fact, after this concern arose, went back and watched the meetings, and we had two different meetings of discussion, and what the direction of the council was, was to essentially engage in this contract with CNC, that they would take all of the assets of the city and all of the funds, assets, including the monies that we had available, and come back and give us options of what we could do with the assets that we have. So whether that means we take $1 million and we do whatever we have to do to the East Whitley property to where it's a better function, whether we have an option to build more units on that property that we own, whether it's, sell the property and you could buy all these things, or whether it is, take the money that you have and buy more properties in town, some of these triplexes that have been coming available, and put those into the queue. So I think that might be a disconnect that I have, and I don't know what the rest of the council recalls, but I very strongly recall that was one of the benefits of what I wanted to see, and I think, I think everyone had that same thought, that we want to know what our options are, and they haven't been back to tell us what our options are.
I think it would also be interesting to know from the experts in our managerial offices, let's say Van from the sewer treatment plant, Bob from Public Works, we'd like to know what is the state of affairs at the sewer treatment plant. I would hate to build 190 units and put the foundation on top, put the foundation on the roof. And that's essentially what we're doing right now, is we don't have the water. I know the sewer treatment plant is stressed. If we add another 500 to 1,000 people to this town, we're going to see an influx of necessities like Sheriff's Department, fire, ambulance, hospital. I mean, the water, but the water in the sewer and the trash are huge. And we got, we got to understand, we got to get all those people up here and tell us, yeah, well, this town can handle another 500 to 1,000 people, or it can't. And if it can't, we need to understand that it's not just the city workers. So we got conservancy workers, we got Edison workers, we got schoolteachers, we got the Island Company, we got city workers. I mean, basically, we need to come together as an entire community and discuss this, and I don't want to jump ahead in any way, shape, or form. I mean, we still don't have our water that we needed, and we're acting like we are, we're having discussions like we have it, but we don't. And so we have some other things to discuss along with our assets.
The infrastructure of this city have been woefully neglected for many years, and what this council has done is instructed us to come forward with plans for the renovation of that infrastructure that includes, as the councilman says, the wastewater treatment plant, to making sure we have an adequate water supply, to make sure that we have adequate drainage facilities. There have been many things done in the past, but the fact is that the last focused effort on infrastructure in this city was done in the 1980s. Actually, I think Councilmember Olson was on the council at that time with the formation of the redevelopment agency. And that's why not only are we assembling our plans, what we have in place, but we're looking at where there's gaps in those, in those plans. And then you, with your leadership, you have also told us to put together a capital improvement program, to put together the development impact fee program, to look at development of the enhanced infrastructure financing district, so that we not just have ideas over here, but we know how to fix them. But I want to repeat that the infrastructure in this city, for many years in the past, and some people may not like this, but the fact is that it was woefully neglected, maybe for good reasons, or whatever, I'm just saying it was woefully neglected, but it's not neglected anymore, and the points you make are excellent, that it all has to work together in order to deliver affordable housing, you have to be able to have those other facilities that serve it. I will say this, though, in terms of the general, I can hear my wife almost telling me to shut up, because she sends me text messages sometimes during these meetings. But your general plan that's adopted in 2013 really gives the parameters for growth. You don't have to grow, you can grow as fast as you want to, or not, you can grow as slow as you want to. It really is, the issue is not even water or sewer, or those are important, it's what is satisfactory to the community. And, but the general plan sets the general broad parameters, we just have to have the ability then, if you're going to build out in that plan, to provide the services to it. So I apologize for that. I can hear loud ringing in my ear right now as my wife is talking.
Thank you.
Yes.
Well, on that topic, I know, maybe it was last council meeting, you put up, you know, an idea of the starting developers' fees, which I don't know if that's going anywhere or what's happening with that, but, I mean, to me, that would be a start. It's unbelievable to me that that hasn't been, because that's what that's about, and so, just saying, hope that doesn't get lost.
That is, actually, we're just refining, Madam Mayor, just to answer the question quickly, we're refining the fee proposal that was presented to you earlier. We're putting our ducks in order, if you will, and then we'll bring that back to you, Bob, in December?
Yeah.
Yeah, the comment about having some public meetings to make sure that they understand what's being proposed, so, and then, of course, we'll develop, an interim fee we'll ask you to adopt, and then we'll have the actual fee long-term, which will be based on a complete study. But we don't want to lose, if there's a lot of development, we don't want to lose that impact fee for that development, because it escapes just before the fee's imposed.
And we could go back, right?
We can.
Can we go back? How far can we go back?
We can only capture that going forward.
Going forward?
Yeah, without, without...
You can't go six months back or prior to that?
But through development agreements and things, you can, you can do things prospectively.
As well as conditions of approval on any project being built.
Right.
So can I mention the V word?
V?
Bonds?
Oh, bonds, yes.
So, can I ask that?
Please.
Because they haven't moved forward, or they're immune from...
That's already been done, so the conditions of approval have already been done, so we can't change those conditions of approval. It's gone through the process.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, before we move on, I just want to reiterate on this contract with CNC, that contract was for 360 days, I believe. So by the time we get to the December 4 meeting, that contract will have expired. Or I believe that there was a 60-day extension to it, so that might be something staff could look at.
Thank you.
When it comes back.
Hi, Greg Harris. You know, I know you guys have got a lot of plans in the works and everything, but has anybody done environmental protection review on everything? Because you're talking about people, you're talking about services and everything, but this island's small, and you got an environmental protection survey, it'll tell you just how many people you can put in the boat, or how much your services can handle. And I was wondering if you're going to have one of those, is it going to be, is it going to be free for everybody to look at and scrutinize? And, because there's a lot of things going on. I've seen a lot of projects shut down because they failed to do an environmental protection, you know, agency survey. And so I know you're going to build a lot of, you want to build a lot of stuff here, but you're going to need the right surveys to, you know, to make it clear.
Mayor, the gentleman raises, it is the thing that has to be done before anything can happen. That's why any discussions now about projects, they are concepts. The gentleman is, Ms. Harris is absolutely correct, that before anything can be committed to, there has to be full environmental review, full environmental assessments, full environmental impacts identified. And not just that, but under the California Quality, Environmental Quality Act, you have to look at options. One option is no build. One option is to do what's proposed. Another option might be to do something different. So the gentleman makes the excellent point that, that it has to, whatever you do has to fit within, A, the general plan, and B, it has to conform with environmental standards. Nothing can be committed to, there can be discussion...
So is that underway? Are you going to start on environmental protection?
As soon as, yes, sir. That will be part of the review. If the council directs us to move forward with a certain form of housing discussion, we have to do a complete assessment environmentally, and it'll be done independently, and it'll be done, all of that information will be available to the public.
Because it might save a lot of discussion. I, you know, I've been in a few projects where they failed to give an environmental review, and they had to shut them down.
Yeah, that's a bad, that's a bad thing.
And nobody's happy there.
Absolutely.
And so you're having a lot of discussion tonight about, you know, a lot of different things, but the first one is that, you know, the environmental protection, you know, review before you, before you move on.
Well, and in fact, as someone who worked eight years in Lake Tahoe, in that wonderful place, and who's been fortunate by God to be here and by the grace of these council members, I'm, we're very, we're very sensitive that any ideas are just that, and until they're evaluated, assessed, dissected, options are discussed, there can be no commitment by the city council or by any...
I understand, I just didn't hear that, you know, I didn't hear that being uttered, so I wanted to bring it up.
Yes, sir.
I guess, Greg, and I guess you don't do, correct me if I'm wrong, because you're like, it sounds like you're saying, let's just look at, I guess you can't do environmental impact unless you know what you're going to do.
You have to do that first. You have to do the environmental impact study first.
You basically have to have a project where you define, where, so that you can analyze, so you have a description of what you're going to do.
But you have to get the survey done before you can do anything.
It's called an initial survey, it's an application.
Okay, I just didn't hear it spoken, so I just wanted to bring it up.
And, yes, that will be done, and it has been referenced, I believe...
And that'll be open for the public to review and everything?
Absolutely, and everyone will get a copy of it if they want.
Okay, because it's a small town, and you're, you know, it's going to get packed with a lot of this, with a lot of new additions. All right, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Harris.
Anyone else? No, okay, we can move right along to the consent calendar.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and council. Tonight on the consent calendar, we have, item one is to approve actions from the October 3, 2017, and October 17, 2017, regular city council meeting. Item number two is to approve, or adopt a resolution approving the annual GAN appropriations limit calculation for fiscal years 16, 17, and 17, 18. Item number three is the Pebley Beach Lift Station 25-horsepower pump motor. It's to authorize an expenditure for the repair of the Catherine Lift Station 18-horsepower pump motor assembly to be funded by Sewer Fund Number 108-25-6521 in the amount not to exceed $18,000. Item number four is award wastewater treatment plant de-watering centrifuge procurement. This is a big and important item. It's to authorize the procurement of a replacement de-watering centrifuge for the City of Avalon wastewater treatment plant, following the city's procurement process for a not-to-exceed cost of $250,000. It's noted in the report that these funds are available and budgeted. Item number five is a new copier contract, is to authorize city manager to execute an agreement with SoCal Office Technologies for a 60-month lease and service agreement on the Xerox AltaLink Color Multi-Function Printer Copier. Item number six is a resolution of conceptual support for the new hospital. It is recommended to approve a resolution supporting the development of a new hospital campus, and I should say, so that one can be built before 2030.
Excuse me, the CEO requested, Jason is sick, and he has requested that that be pulled and put on the next agenda.
No, thank you.
I'm sorry, just remember, six. I'm sorry for that.
And I wish him well, I wish my neighbor well. Item number seven is medical cannabis delivery service business and other cannabis business and activities and personal cannabis cultivation regulation ordinances. The recommended action, there are two ordinances. The first is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Avalon amending Chapter 20 of Title V of the Avalon Municipal Code titled Medical Marijuana Dispensaries, and renaming it Medical Cannabis Delivery Service Businesses and Other Cannabis Business and Activities. And two is the ordinance of the City Council of the City, Council amending Title V of the Avalon Municipal Code, adding a new Chapter 30 titled Personal Cannabis Cultivation Regulations to the Avalon Municipal Code. Item number eight, is that also Denise on consent too? Item eight?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. It's formal acceptance of results of drawing cards to comply with FPPC, that's Fair Political Practices Commission Conflict Rules. The recommended action is to accept and acknowledge the results of the drawing cards by the city attorney to comply with FPPC regulations regarding conflict of interest, and direct the city attorney to respond in writing to the letter from the community member regarding alleged Brown Act violation pursuant to the drawing cards. Mayor Marshall, Councilmember Olson can participate in the discussions involving any matters involving the Catalina, Santa Catalina Island Company and our property near their businesses. That concludes that shortlist, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel, is there anything you'd like to pull?
I'd just like to pull number four, please.
Okay.
Okay. I'd like to pull three with four. And, let's see, we already have number eight.
Okay.
We've got eight, right?
Yeah.
Three, four, and eight. Okay. On the other items?
Six is out, right?
Six is out.
Okay.
Yes. So we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve items one, two, five, and six, please.
Six.
One, two, five, and seven, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I misspoke.
Okay, is there comments from the community?
I'll second, but I want the record to reflect that I'm going to vote no on the second ordinance of, on the cultivation ordinance.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All right, they're moved in second with this little disclaimer, or whatever. Let's call for the vote. All righty, item number three.
No on number two.
Hi. I, three and four a little bit together, but one of the things that I would like to request, hopefully with the support of the council, is I would like to get a history from staff regarding all of the wastewater treatment repairs in the last three and a half years, specifically, May 2014 to the present. I started going back and just, there's, it's so much when you're trying to look at every single agenda, but it just seems like in the last three and a half years, we have done a significant amount of emergency repairs and repairs to the whole systems, and each time it is, generally speaking, no less than thousands of dollars. So I'm not questioning any of the repairs that were done, but what I'm, what I'm hoping for is a plan, because if we're, if that's what item number four is, is part of a plan, that makes me feel a little bit more uncomfortable. But it just seems like this is, for me personally, this is an area that I really struggle with understanding the mechanics and, and all of it, so it, it's big dollar figures. So I'm hoping that we can see what we've done over the last couple of years, and then if, if it is not a significant amount of work... if it is not a significant amount of work, if we can find what is our plan going for for five years and 10 years. So, I would love council's support on spending the staff resources to put that information together for all of us.
Bob, do you want to respond at all to that, though?
Yeah, we're already working on the capital improvement program. There already was a capital improvement program at the sewer treatment plant. We're reevaluating what the status of the plant, there's a lot of it was based on an old report, so now we're taking a good look, especially as we're looking at reclaimed water coming out of the plant. So, we just did a run-through with some experts, and we're looking at some proposals that we bring to council to look at the plant, but also for all of the sewer saltwater system, so that we can make that comprehensive plan that you want.
Okay.
We have requests that, and we're very much on top of that, so it is coming, yes. And I'd say that it's worthy to put the resources to that at this time.
Okay.
I guess I'm not so concerned about looking back, because I like the looking forward part. However, I, I'm, like you, I'm sure none of it was done because, because they wanted to spend $250,000 on something, but, but I don't, I'm not sure, I mean, Bob, is, do you see there's any benefit to going back and looking at that? Or when you develop your plan, you probably need to go back to see when something was, prior to you being here, when something was replaced, and the longevity of that piece of equipment and that kind of stuff? Is that, you look at that as well in your plan?
Well, I think we need to look back, just to give us a snapshot of how we got to the spot we're at right now with some of our infrastructure, so we don't make those same mistakes, and so that we make sure that also we've got the right level of investment, and at the right time, you know, so that's always with a capital program, you know, the right investment, the right time. The same with the roadways, the right investment at the right time, otherwise you're going to pay bigger bucks at the end, and that's what you're seeing even with these flight pumps. And why it's an emergency action, like the flight pumps, it's at Pebley Beach Lift Station, we have one force main, that's our one sewer line that goes out to our plant, and when anything goes wrong with that, it's critical mass. So, that's why even we're asking on this flight pump, it was great that we had the pump on the shelf, right, at the wastewater treatment plant.
Right.
And no matter what time of that day it happens, what day of the week, we can go out there, we have the staff to go in there and replace that pump. But it takes a little while to get that pump, get one of those pumps, so that's why we want to have that backup pump there, that redundant system.
And that absolutely illustrates my point, because this isn't the first time that we've had this type of conversation, but it could have been with another piece of equipment, and, you know, likewise, we have this conversation when it comes to, you know, our harbor patrol boats, that we can't afford to have a boat down, so we need to have a motor ready to go, you know, at all times. So, I guess what I'm respectfully saying is, is that I don't know if any of these things that we, that we're seeing are duplicate items, if we purchased an item two years ago that only lasted two years, are we budgeting for a potential replacement every two years? And at what point do we really look at, we need significant change in our wastewater treatment plant? And that's kind of where I'm going, is if our wastewater treatment plant can't help us to get to reclaim, to do what we want to do with our water system, then are we spending all of this money, or are we actually working towards a replacement?
That's what we're actually working on right now to give you those results.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. Were, was that, let me clarify that. So, we're working on a replacement for, what were you referring to?
They're working on the plan.
Okay, the plan. Okay, good.
Yeah.
I think it's very knowledgeable and insightful that we do, I think it's a good idea that we go back. I never, I didn't think of that, and now that you say that, I think it's a noteworthy thing to do, because going forward, I can only assess from my own common knowledge that using freshwater and purified, treated water, freshwater, that is, once we get on a freshwater system, it wouldn't be as demeaning to the system and all the parts that function, right? I mean, because saltwater is what tears the system down, correct? I mean, is it one, is one of the things?
Both on the delivery of the saltwater that's going into your house to run your toilet or your fire flows, but also in the plant that's actually treating that saltwater, that sewage that's coming back to the plant, and it's hard on the plant.
So, are we looking at reclaimed water and going into a system of that? Because I know we had some money budgeted for it, and then the money was taken off the budget.
Yep.
I want to know how this is going to get paid for.
We're looking at about $40 million of replacement, Bob, is it 30 million?
Well, the next step was to look at the plant to make sure, so that we weren't making the mistake of trying to improve that plant, and it should be replaced, and then also, first to look at the plant instead of, oh, just put the reclaim on the back end of it, and the plant's not in very good shape. So, that was why the next step was to bring forward, how good is our plant? What do we need to do? Is it have enough capacity for the future? What's wrong with it? What's it doing good? What's it doing wrong, you know?
So, we're work looking at the two.
We're working on that now.
Parallel.
Yeah, so, two weeks ago, I brought in a set of experts to take a look so that we could start making a proposal, bring a proposal forward, so that we could start writing grants, because grants were available for that activity.
Okay.
And so that we could lead to the capital improvement program also.
Okay, and we've also got some other connections for the grant monies, and my buddy Ken Casey from Amoresco, I would like, I guess he introduced himself to you, and he does projects like this, and that was a connection from the League of California Cities Conference that I had. I'd like to ask you, this centrifuge that you're talking about, that's going to cost $250,000, is the backup centrifuge, correct? So, it's basically, it's a macerator that separates the solids from the liquids?
So, we have two centrifuges, and both of them went under, you know, emergency repairs.
Oh.
And so, we were not in very good shape, so we're at the point where we would get a new one, and that would be our primary centrifuge.
Okay.
And the second centrifuge is, as we need additional capacity, you know, during peak times, we'd have that second centrifuge.
It's still functioning?
But also, it's hobbling, both of them.
Yeah, because Van had expressed that to me like two years ago, when I went to, when I made a visit out there, and he showed me the backup centrifuges. He says, we're having problems with this one, and it's absolutely necessary that we get it fixed in case the main centrifuge goes down. So, we do have a backup redundant system, but it's hobbling, so.
Yes.
Okay, but you're looking at that.
So, after we replace this one, then we'll do the repairs so that we have that second redundant one also at that level of reliability that we want, so that we have both working in good working order.
Okay, that's great, and I appreciate you guys keeping up with the reclaimed water system, because I think that's going to be paramount here, because I think we, you know, I mentioned it before, we do throw away like 200,000 gallons of freshwater a day, I mean, at peak season, so that just goes flush, gets flushed out into the ocean, which we could be using. Unfortunately, it's kind of mixed with some salt, so that's why we can't use it, but if we get onto a reclaimed water system, I think it would be a lot less, a lot less harm and problems with our system than the saltwater, and that's obvious, just because saltwater does that. It tears, it tears metal down, and that's what all our pumps are made of, some of our pipes, and it even tears down concrete, so. Anyway, I wanted to talk about this just because it's just a big figure, and.
It is a big figure.
Yeah.
And that's, so that's why, it actually was in last year's budget, and it's in the CIP, but I asked Van Matting, our contract plant supervisor out there, to make sure that he investigated very, in detail, the alternatives, and so that's why we're at this spot right now.
All right.
And bringing it forward now.
Okay, are we doing, can I ask you a question? Somebody brought this up to me. Are we taking photographic evidence of all of this stuff that, so we have documentation on paper, but do we have photographs to back up? I mean, going forward, maybe that would be a good idea, if we start taking pictures of everything, cataloging everything with photographs to boot. I mean, that is, as far as all the assets of the community, because then that would be something that, I mean, I know it's also something else to manage, and it's more software and things like that, but it's kind of a good idea.
With the systems that you've authorized in the budget, the Laserfish system and the, and the going from the paper system to the electronic retrieval system, we have, we will have much greater capacity to do an active, an active recovery of that data, so you can, we can take it, scan it, it'll be in a file, you can say wastewater treatment plant, boom, it'll pop it, it'll pop it up with all the data. So, your point is, is, yeah, I mean, we have a greater capacity now, we're developing, thanks to your support for that electronic storage.
All right, thanks a lot, Bob, I appreciate you.
I would like to go back to Councilmember Cassidy then. So, based on what Mr. Greenlaw has said.
Oh, he's, I think we'll provide a little bit of information, and if I'm the only one that's interested, then I'm happy to just come in and sit down with you and go over it. It'll be fine, so with that, if everybody wants it, that's great. That was my original plan, because it is, I'm asking for staff resources.
Okay, but I guess, if you're, if they're going to be developing their plan, and they're going to be looking at what they have and what their future needs are, to me, what I'm hearing you say is go back to every purchase order that was written for the last so many years, and tell us what it is and how much it costs, and I don't know what the value of that is, I guess.
I think the value of it is that we've been talking about having this plan for three years, and we don't have a plan, so.
I just think Bob will be pointing out what he needs.
I think the most direct approach I can get with Van Matting, and we could say, here's, here's all the agenda items we, and this have a description of what that is, and we can create a report out of that between the two of us, okay, without putting too many resources.
That'd be great.
And so, there'll be a narrative of why that happened, and have we made progress? Are we still just at reactionary mode?
Are these the same items over and over? Because a lot of these were before your tenure here with us, so, you know, you may not be aware of some of the replacements, so I just, I think it's good practice, and I certainly can't ask, answer questions when they're coming to me. Didn't you just do this two years ago? Well, I don't know what that part is.
I have a historical binder full of all the money we've spent.
Perfect. Okay, so with that, I will make a motion to approve item number three, or should I do three and four?
Do three and four.
Three and four.
That's all right.
Okay.
Second.
Make further discussion? Call for the vote.
All ayes.
And now we're moving to item number eight.
Pam Bobbers, 217 Cali del Sol. I'm hesitant these days to address you on legal issues, it's obviously not my role, I don't actually practice law anymore, but I, this is so bothersome to me that I felt that I absolutely had to stand up and say to you that I urge you to vote no on this next item, and I'm going to explain why. With this item, you are being asked to retroactively condone possible violations of the Fair Political Practices Act and the Brown Act. Voting no is necessary to correct legal missteps and to restore public confidence in the actions of the city council with respect to its future decisions regarding these significant housing developments. The city attorney states in the staff report that the drawing of cards is ministerial and does not need to be included as an action item on the agenda. There are no statutes or cases or regulations cited to support that assertion. I've looked at the League of Cities books, the Attorney General's books, the City Attorney Division of the League of Cities, there is nothing that supports that assertion. And in fact, every other lottery selection that the city council has encountered, including most recently the one for Vons, has been included as a specific item on the agenda. This is not form over substance. Myself and others specifically asked and were told that the housing thing would not be on the agenda, and for that reason, we did not attend the meeting to voice our opposition to the secretive process that up until that point had been used to set the details of these projects. So, it was a complete surprise to us that this election was made. We are also concerned because the secretive process has included attendance of Mayor Marshall and Mayor Protem Olson at private meetings with the island company and city staff prior to the drawing of cards, even though they have conflicts of interest based on property ownership near the Las Casitas or Tremont properties. City Manager Jenkins was candid with me, and I appreciate that, and told me Annie and Only did sit in on a few meetings, but they did not negotiate anything. I played point. But the fact of the matter is that the Brown Act and the Fair Political Practices Act go far beyond just sitting or negotiating, they prohibit participation, which in some of the cases has meant silent observation, or asking questions, or making a face, or interrupting, or participating is not permitted, and it doesn't make sense to me that you draw cards after people have already participated. The whole purpose of the law of the Fair Political Practices Act is to preclude a government official from participating in decisions where it appears he may not be totally objective. It is not just actual improprieties which the law seeks to forestall, but also the appearance of possible improprieties. So, we have here two conflicted members who attended private meetings before their conflicts were announced at public meetings required under the law. Then the city told us the housing issue would not be on the agenda, did not post it as an item, but went ahead anyway with the card drawing, which by the way, cannot even be viewed on the video. For some reason, the camera focuses during that transaction on the city manager. And then.
I saw it here.
Yeah, and then it turns out that it's the two people who have the conflict that have already participated in meetings who are chosen. This doesn't pass the smell test. I urge you to vote no on this item. I believe that Mayor Marshall and Mayor Protem should be disqualified, and Councilmembers Hernandez and McGugan Cassidy, who did not participate in improper meetings, should proceed in their place, or at a minimum, do a properly noticed card drawing in front of the public. Laws regarding government transparency and ethics are important. I urge you to vote no on this item. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, the purpose of this item is to respond to the allegation of a Brown Act violation. The FPPC matters would not be something that the council could determine, that is an individual matter. The purpose of this item is to address the Brown Act issue of the drawing of the cards that was not specifically on the agenda. So, we have looked at all the laws, all the regulations, and can find nothing that requires that the drawing of cards be placed on an agenda as an action item. We have voluntarily done this in the past, once, and other times it has not been on the agenda, and it has been considered as part of an item, and I believe once it was done way in advance of an item that was not on the agenda, but that was seven years ago. I've also looked at the regulation, and the regulation specific to the drawing of lots or random choice does not specifically indicate that it should be at a public meeting. There are other regulations where it does talk about doing it in open session or closed session. In response to Ms. Alper's letter, and there was also one, I think, from Ms. Warner, I also contacted other attorneys in our office to ask them if they had ever placed this item on the agenda, the answer was no, and I contacted other law firms, and I asked if other law firms had ever placed the drawing of straws or drawing of lots on the item, and that answer was no. So, what we did is, it was done during the city attorney portion of that item, the results were fair. The purpose of this item is to acknowledge what those resorts are, results were, to correct, or to quote cure, the alleged violation of the Brown Act, because the FPPC says that once you have participated and you've been chosen, it's kind of like yours forever, or as long as there's a conflict exists. We will note that there may not in fact actually be conflicts, but we took the action based upon the potential conflict of real property. There's another avenue to go to the FPPC and ask if the two owners of real property actually have an actual conflict, which is still an option. So, there are really three options before you. You can, you can vote no on this, and say that we are not curing it. You could vote yes on it as is. You could also, with respect to the Brown Act, you could redraw cards tonight if you wanted, you might run into some FPPC issues there. What I would suggest, based upon our research and the view of the other offices that are competitors to ours, is that, again, item number eight be approved with direction that in the future, if there is a conflict with, if there's an agenda item where you have to draw straws, it'll only be done at that item, and if there's a future item that is not on the agenda at that meeting, the council directs to specifically include an agenda item for drawing straws. That way, going forward, there will not be any, it will be the policy of the city to always have it noticed on the agenda that you've been, you've been drawing straws, or if it was with an item that all of a sudden you said, oh, my gosh, I've got a conflict, it would still be done with, associated with that item. That is a cure for future actions, and so, again, it's up to the council. And so, again, it's up to the council.
Mayor, if I...
Well, I guess this is something I can't comment on.
Well, can I, can I offer a comment, Mayor, as a non-lawyer? You have one council member without a conflict. You have four members with conflict. It seems to me, as a layperson, not a lawyer, that the substance of it is which of those members has the least conflict. That is, and this is not, I'm not playing lawyer now. I do that during the day and then you correct me. So, and, so which member has the least conflict? And maybe the reverse argument is which member, if participating, would have the greatest conflict? And I think the way the straws were drawn, if I, if I, again, the non, the lay position would be that it seems to me that the people with the least, have the least conflict because of a few feet in terms of property adjacent to this project. The second point I wanted to make is this, that it was, there was a request made, and I'm not going to go into the details, just to say there was a request made by a member that the matter, that there be a drawing at that specific meeting so that the, so that the people could be prepared, the council would be knowing, two weeks coming, who could participate in that, in that discussion. So I only say that not in any way contrary to Ms. Albers, who I have a high regard for, just as a point of clarification. So are we, are we dealing with substance or form? And I think the substance is who has the least conflicts. City attorneys explained. I just don't want to see projects that are delayed. I don't want to see things that we need to do. Housing is a top issue of this council. It's water and housing, and yet we have to have one to have the other. And I, but, but it's, in the end, your, your choice.
And again, just two other points. Under the Brown Act, we looked at this, we did not consider this to be in action, which requires a notice. But again, if the council's direction is, in the future, we can definitely make that as a policy. And legally speaking, what the law is, is that a conflict is a conflict. It doesn't look at degrees of conflict.
Right.
So we had that issue with Vons, because we had various different types of conflicts with Vons.
Form and substance.
I want to say that I absolutely disagree with the least conflict part of that discussion because, you know, it is a matter of opinion, and everyone's got one individually. And I'm just going to say, if you are somebody who makes $501 from a, from a party to this, then you have a conflict. But if you're somebody who has a home that could potentially, you know, its value could increase by $50,000, you may not be receiving income from the entity, but you still have a financial conflict. So to me, the appearance of conflict is, is based on an individual perspective. So I want to make that very clear. The other part that I disagree with, and maybe it's just the wording in this staff report, and Scott, I'm not in any way trying to, you know, create an issue between you and I here, but I am not okay with agreeing to something that discusses any deal with the Island Company or any other entity. We're basically saying we're giving a blanket for any future discussions to happen, and it's referenced, and it's possible, it's the way that I'm reading it, but it's referenced twice in this document where it's about, you know, any deal with the Island Company or the other one was any, on any subject relating to the Island Company. So I'm really not comfortable with that. If, if the council's direction and comfort of the council is such that we, the council wants to agree to accept the drawing of the straws on the last one, that is only for that particular conversation that has begun. It is not for, we're going to change our mind and we're going to now look at a site over here, we're going to look at a bigger project or a smaller project. I just, I'm feeling uncomfortable with all of this, and I'm feeling uncomfortable enough that I am that council person who brought this out at the meeting and said, wait a minute, this is not okay. I want to know, if I'm expected to potentially be a person discussing this item in two weeks' time, I want to know so I can be prepared and I can get the documents ahead of time and not be blindsided three days before a council meeting when we get our packets that, hey, this is a major project that the, that the city, this agreement that the city's entering into. So the whole thing is uncomfortable for me.
I would agree with you that this only pertains to the matters discussed in the proposed memorandum of understanding that was discussed at the last meeting. And what the law provides is if there's another deal with the company or anyone else, and the parameters change such that, for instance, it involves property that an individual may not have a conflict with, then what the law provides is that we can segment the conflicts and you can participate in that portion of something where you don't have a conflict. So this just applies to the memorandum of understanding or the points that were discussed at the meeting two weeks ago. If it changes, if the deal changes, if there's new properties brought in, if it's something different with the Island Company, then we would conduct a different conflict of interest analysis on that item.
And regardless of how this vote is done tonight, I would like the wording changed. I would like the authorization, if it's authorized by the council, to be not can participate in discussions involving any deal with the Island Company, but, but reflective of that particular deal. So regardless of, if it's approved by the council, then it really needs to be clear.
Well, then let me bring up something in what you're saying. Because as you said, you don't want to be like blindsided and something come up, you know, like Sophie and I have been in those meetings. Then you can take that across the board to anything. Because there's a lot of times that if there's something that, that kind of like our baby, something that we like, we meet with those people and talk about. Or maybe there's something that Joe and Ole or and so they sit in meetings. Well, then we're all, in every one of those cases, then that's the same.
No, I disagree with you. And let me give you a perfect example. Something as big as a project that you and I are holding very dear to us is the opportunity to create a teen court in our community that actually addresses some of the concerns that we have right now. So we have actually discussed that at council, and we have gotten, we've gotten support from the entire council to enter into discussions and, and moving forward with differences in law enforcement in our community. Negotiating a memorandum of understanding with an entity of any sort is, is significant. It's not just, hey, you and I want to, we want to try to start working on another park and get grant funding for that. It's not just, hey, we want to put on an event and do something really cool for the Fourth of July. This is a big deal.
I know it's a big deal, but, and your, your examples are very, very good. And if, and, however it was remiss in us not being advised that we had these conflicts, I mean, I didn't think about it, you know? And maybe that's where, when we come into these kind of projects, it needs a little more scrutiny on, okay, because, you know, we were going in, meeting and chatting, and then all of a sudden, whoops, you can't do it. So, so there's a little, we just need to be more careful on the administrative end that this is...
Well, in fact, Mayor, I think, in defense of all of you, is that in fact, I think you were invited by certain parties, other, not staff, we would get invited to a meeting, and you had been invited by the company. And in fact, I also want to mention that the party, that Ms. Cassidy was the one who had asked at the last meeting that this matter be addressed so that people will know going forward, and I think she was right on point, that this matter be addressed. So it's not like it was something hidden. It was not like that there was campaign contributions, or it's not any of that. It's, you know, the, we weren't in some cases, I was surprised sometimes to see members there, because I thought the meetings were with, were with the company, staff, as we'd been directed. And it was fine with me, I mean, personally, but, and I want to note another thing and make it very clear that the council members there did no, and to me, this is important, but I hope it is to others, did not make, they were not negotiating. The staff, who you hire and pay a lot of money, were the ones who were discussing deal points. And, and then, and you didn't call us and say, don't do this or don't do that. I want to make that very clear. So, so just, just to keep it all above board, and let's not draw conclusions that aren't there.
But at what point did this council give direction to city staff to negotiate an MOU?
In the, I would have to go back and check the record, but we have reported to you in public and in a management update on what we were doing and why we were doing it. Those were in at least three items of the update. And we also talked about bringing it back to the council for full council direction. And at no time did you or any other council member object. So we were on the understanding that we were doing exactly what you had told us to do in regard to developing opportunities for housing without committing the city. And any other representation of that is not valid.
I would just like to ask any members of the community that are here, do you feel that, that this was all publicly disclosed? I mean, does anybody want to speak to that?
I mean, there may have been some, oh, go ahead, Leslie. Leslie Warner, 306, Whitley. I do read your updates.
Thank you.
However, first off, it's clear that Annie, or excuse me, the mayor and Mayor Protem were at the meeting without having the straws being drawn, right? And to me, that, that didn't feel right. That wasn't directed. You didn't decide ahead of time, we're going to send so-and-so and so-and-so to this meeting. And then when you came out with that MOU at the October 6th meeting or 17th, whatever it was, I was flabbergasted. I mean, here we go, let's get this done by next July 1st. Slow down! Because when I went through and asked Dear Denise to help me understand all this, I was like, I don't really see this, the council saying, negotiate, we want it now, we want it to happen. I see that you had an agreement with the housing, the housing authority, with the CC Corporation. I understand that, which obviously has not been coming through as it's supposed to. So something just doesn't feel right about how fast you're pushing on this, how you're saying that you want a development agreement by next summer. We have no reports on anything about our infrastructure yet. We don't even know how many people this town can support.
Housing takes a lot of planning to develop affordable and workforce housing. It takes time. It cannot, as you said correctly, and I always appreciate your comments here, we've talked offline and online, that it takes a long time to bring housing projects to fruition. And if truly, housing of workforce and affordable housing is an important issue, as the city council has said in its, in its strategic plan, then those, the development of those plans take enormous time. And you are correct that none of the plans, there's no plans in place, there's just discussions of ideas that, correctly, we have to bring back for further discussion. I've said in the past, and I will say it again, that the issue of water is in itself, freshwater in Avalon is, let's see, I'm supposed to be politically correct, so let me see how I say this. I guess it's not as big a problem as it was portrayed to be because of two desalt plants that were online. And fortunately, Edison and us are moving alignment to create a sustainable water source. But in the end, if we don't, there's nothing that we can do to subprove any projects without an adequate supply of water. And your points are, and Ms. Cassidy's and others are well taken. But if we don't start now, it won't happen in a year. And people who are living in overcrowding conditions, people who are living double rooms, people living housing that are dilapidated or substandard are still going to be living in those units. And that's what we're trying to address in whatever form the council ultimately will approve. And certainly, anyone can slow it down. We want to have full disclosure. We will have full disclosure as part of the environmental process, and it'll all be done in a public meeting as far as the discussions. And I, and the proof will always be in the pudding, and I hope that the pudding is something you say, yeah, you did, you did what you said, and that's what we're trying to do. I have no self-interest. I don't lease from anybody. I don't take campaign contributions from anybody. I don't, so my, so I'm not trying to make anybody, except my council, happy or unhappy. I'm just trying to achieve the goals that the city council has said that are important, and that is to deliver workforce and affordable housing for this community and quit talking about it, and let's get it done in a manner that we can sustain. And that's, that's really all we're doing.
But I don't see the information that you've researched ahead of time so that you know you can even support that amount of units. You're coming up with a plan without saying, can we really support this? Not just water, everything else. And I know the council is very aware of that, like Joe said, hospital, fire, sheriff, school, roads, all of it. How many people? And then there's the quality of life issue, which, which was part of the 2020 vision, and we're almost there, and nobody's talking about quality of life anymore. So I feel that you should, this doesn't, this number eight just doesn't feel right. I feel like you're backtracking. I'm very disappointed that you had these meetings without being clear of who should be at the meetings from the council. And I just wanted to go on record as that. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Paula Patterson, 221, Whitley. And I feel like this has been sort of the cart before the horse. And I understand that housing and water, these are huge issues. But I have yet to hear, and I think there's a considerable basis for a level of distress by the community for any kind of deals that are struck with the Island Company. I mean, tonight, on part of the agenda for the hospital, we have this issue that now they're not interested in doing hospital, right?
And in fact, that was disputed in an email from the Island Company, that they have not said that they were, I read the email, I think all of you got it. They said they did not, they just had not concluded where a location would be. So that was a representation that was not accurate, according to what Mr. Harrell in an email. And I'm no fan or not a bad fan of the company, I'm just, but that's what, that's what, but I saw the same information.
But that was, that's the only information I had, was what I read. So I didn't know that it has been disputed. It's just what I saw in there. And there are other issues that I think, I mean, you're also dealing with a lease agreement that seems to be a little bit dicey. So, I mean, there are many reasons why the community has this kind of level of alarm, and we see things happening, and we don't have developers' fees. And there seems to be this kind of sense of urgency about making a memorandum of understanding about housing here. The one thing that concerns me is I still haven't heard, yes, it's low-cost housing for Island Company employees. Well, is that people that are here or is that new people? We talk about crowded areas that people are living in now. What is the guarantee that those people that are living under those conditions will have access to those 150 units that are there?
We don't have all those details yet.
Right.
But, but your points are exactly, and you, thank you, your points are exactly points that we're asking them in, in who is going to be served when they, at the company, if they build housing in Las Casitas? Who's going to be served? Are they going to be full-time employees here on the island? We've said to them initially that we're not talking about summer, summer visitors. We've said in terms of affordable housing that there should be a requirement that it be existing people here first, because we're, we're using redevelopment money, 20% set aside, the city council has the, has the ability to restrict, as we did in the 80s for, for the Tremont project, the original Tremont project, that we can, we can, we can narrow down who's eligible. This isn't to solve Los Angeles problem, they've got their own problems, God bless them, we love them, but, not their problems, but them. But this is to solve our problems. And, and I think that your, though, suggestion, and then Leslie's, and, and the council members, is that we need to give you a full update on the status of the, of the CNC work and, and the sites that they had looked at in the past, what the sites were, and why they selected this site to be the one up on Upper Tremont. The Las Casitas project, they have to, all the things that we're asking, I don't want an agreement, and you don't either, that's broad and says a lot of nice things, and development agreements sometimes are that way. We want specifics, and that's why it's going to take time. It may take, it may take six months, it may take a year, or it may not get done. So our, our goal is to try and achieve what your goals, the communities and the councils are, and protect the farm. Protect the farm, protect us.
Well, it's also an issue, I think, as Leslie said, about, you know, I, we need all of those things, but it also impacts the quality of life. And also on the agenda tonight is this issue of substandard housing, which is, I'm so happy that this is on there, because I walk by it every day. I just can't believe people are living like that on this island. And, and so, but what's our guarantee that that's going to happen? And it also says in that CNC report that this is supposed to be with community discussion, and heretofore, there has been none. And that's in that CNC agreement.
Actually, there was an initial meeting, but you're right, it's been a long time since they've reported to the council.
So I want to just focus us, the item on the agenda is the acceptance of the drawing of cards.
Okay.
Next, next, and the reason it's on the agenda is because legally, under the Brown Act, if someone alleges the violation... Act, if someone alleges the violation, you have 30 days to bring it to the council for, quote, cure. And so, even though, it's our opinion that you don't need a cure, what I'm doing is I'm bringing it to you for action to accept what was done with the drawing of cards, and give us direction in the future, that when, if it is an advance item, we will actually place a specific separate agenda item for a drawing of cards, and if it is with a, a item that is, substantive item that is on the agenda, we would include the drawing of cards as part of the notice of that particular item.
That would be a good idea, since some of the public did take offense to the fact that we drew cards and they weren't able to make it here. And I respect those people coming up and showing up to the meetings, and I respect their input, and I base my opinions somewhat on the feedback I get from, from the public. I mean, that is the basis of, of the structure of my decision-making process personally. So.
And I would note that at that meeting, the only thing that was done was with the drawing of cards, there was no substantive discussion on it. It was just a matter of the drawing of, of cards, which technically, you could even do in, in the city attorney's office, or in the clerk's office, but we thought that we would do it as part of the meeting so that people could see, and we'd be transparent, that it was being done in public. But again, if that's direction, we can, for the future, we can have it formally be on the agenda. Again, my discussions with competitor law firms is, they don't, but we can be more proactive than the competition.
I think on these big type of projects, it's probably better for us.
Okay.
Okay, well, going forward, if, if the people that are concerned would like us to draw again, because maybe they're hoping somebody else will get drawn, we can do it again. I don't have a problem with that. But if it's, but since it was at the request of Councilman Cassidy, we didn't see any problem with it, and it seemed fair and equitable, so I don't care.
And, and for just, I'm, my, my concerns are, are a little bit different than some of the community concerns. My, I believe that there was not great negotiation on either Mayor Protem or the mayor's part. And I also agree with your comments, Mayor, that there are times that you start discussing and get information, and then you find out, oh, wait a minute, I'm within 600 feet of this, I need to bail out, which is why I push the discussion to have the straws drawn, because I, I really felt that, you know, if I was going to be chosen, or Councilmember Hernandez was going to be chosen, we would want to be able to have the time to, to review the documents. So my, my issue is specifically not with, with either of you, it was just how this all came about, and, and the fact that the meetings were happening, and all of a sudden, I'm hearing, not from city staff, but I'm hearing from other parties, that I could potentially be voting on an MOU I knew nothing of. So that specifically was my issue. The drawing of the cards themselves, as that process happened, was fair. Um, you know, I always would love to be involved, but that's just the nature of me. So I, I'm not having an issue that I'm not the person involved, and, and I do believe that that process was fair. I just.
How does the vetting, the vetting process materialize? That is, when, when, when you figure out who has a conflict of interest, and what kind of conflict of interest it may be, whose responsibility is that to point that out to us? Or it's, it's?
It's the council, it's each, it's the council members' responsibility.
It's our responsibility. So basically, we gotta get a measuring tape and measure how far it is?
No, no, and again, again, the purpose of the Brown Act is, you know, when, like, for instance, in the Planning Commission, you get the agenda, they go out, and there's a map there that usually shows who, who, who the notice was, was given to. If you get an agenda item, and it involves either a company that you have business with, or you get income, or it's property near you, you can go ahead and you can go to Amanda, and she can do the map to show whether you're within 300 feet. The FPPC recently changed the rules.
You, you're the one that confirms that, though, right? That confirms that there's a conflict there?
Well, again.
Other words, you've got, like, we've discussed that there might be an item that I have a conflict with, but I let you know that well before the meeting, that I want, I want to be transparent about this.
Correct. And so, the, the way it works is, is we give advice on whether we think there may be a conflict, but the ultimate decision is for each individual council member, but we can explain that what the rules are. And again, what I'm saying is, it used to be, a couple of years ago, it used to be a hard and fast rule. If you are within a certain number of feet, boom, you have a conflict, period, end of story. Now the FPPC has changed the rule to add a little bit more flexibility, where you can say, yeah, I may be within a certain number of feet, but this is not going to actually impact my property, and you can, and you can determine that you don't have a conflict. Or the safest thing to do is always, in any situation, whether you, whether it's a financial conflict, a real property conflict, whatever, you can write a letter to the FPPC and say, you know, this is, these are the facts, and they give you, you know, an, an opinion.
Oh. And it's always important when the FPPC is involved, there's the advisory division and the enforcement division. It's always nice to have a statement from the enforcement division that says, and I think you would agree, that, 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 that they are also in agreement with the advice that you're getting, should it ever come to that, and, and so.
And if you, the council will call, and the, the public may not remember this, we, we did have complaints about three council members and their participation in the freight line matter, which resulted in FPPC complaints that went up to the FPPC, and the FPPC determined that the participation of the three council members in that item did not violate FPPC
Think of mayor and council in the early 80s, when we were forming the ACIA, and we put the whole city of Avalon in the redevelopment project area, and we have five members, all of whom live in the city. And if you don't think that was, that was an interesting time, when everyone had, but, but they had to have a vote, of course, the rules have changed a little bit since then, but I mean, that's the kind of thing in small communities, it's, it's pretty hard to avoid any kind of entanglement of any.
Very true, very true.
Okay, can we move forward?
Yeah.
So I, I think to avoid this in the future, we're, we're going to have to be a little more, have a little more foresight, and let, let the people know.
Proactive. We can be, again, if, if council's direction is to adopt the recommended action, you can modify that by directing staff that, that if there is a, if the item is not on the agenda, but, but you know there may be a conflict in the future, that we can put a specific agenda item for the drawing of cards, or lot. And if there is an agenda item that, that is on the agenda, that you're going to rule on right then, that is part of that agenda item, we would draw cards at that time. I will note that if we put out the agenda report on Friday, or let's say Thursday, and you suddenly realize that you have a conflict, because, you know, you don't, maybe you don't know what, what's coming, at that point, the practice of all cities is to have members vote during that item, if it's actually on the agenda. So it may not, I may not, a staff report may not say that there's an existing conflict, because we may not know about it. You may determine over the weekend or so that you have one, we can add it, but to the extent that we know, when we're preparing a staff report, that there's a potential conflict, we will note in the staff report that this item will, will require the drawing of straws. Or, or lots.
But I do believe when it comes to property, that's something that you and the Planning Commission know way better than we. I think somebody said, oh, he's just a couple of feet off.
Correct.
You know, well, we're not, and it's, I guess it's as the crow flies, heck, I don't know. But, but I think in that way, you should protect us, because, you know, we don't know now if it's about me taking money or something like that, well, then that's, that's, that's something I have control over. I mean, I.
And I will say, we can talk about this, but, but it also requires that we have knowledge of the specific properties involved in, and so.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay, so, that's a pleasure, the council.
So I'll make a motion. We, that we, okay. Can I waive this reading?
Yes, 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 this is not an ordinance.
Okay, except, okay, so, but we're going to vote on this, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So I want to waive the reading. I'm okay with the results, being the only unconflicted member on the board. But I'd like to add that we would like to, in the future, is it changing the ordinance? Is, is?
No, no, no.
It's just changing the policy?
You're, you're directing staff.
Okay.
In the future, that if an item is on the agenda where there are straws to be drawn, that it be noticed in the staff report.
Okay.
And that if there's an item that's not on the agenda, but we, it's a future item, that any drawing of straws, or whatever, determination of lots, be a specific agenda item.
Okay, that's duly noted. No, I resonate exactly what you just said, and I make a motion to approve item number eight.
Joe, would you be willing to amend your motion to clarify that this is, this acceptance is only for this particular discussion and not for future projects?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Yes. And.
Good, is there a second?
I'm not too sure about this.
I'll second it.
Okay. Call for the vote.
They moved on you?
We have four eyes, Marshall, Sampson, Cassidy, and Olson, and one no, Hernandez.
Item number nine.
Mayor, the, the staff report is simply articulating that the council, if, to provide training for the city manager, or for the management team, would need to appropriate funds. The staff report has a, a recommendation, but we, of course, will take whatever direction you wish to provide in regard to this matter.
Um, number nine?
Yes.
Uh, before we even talk about this, and I'm sorry, this is a difficult agenda for me tonight, before we even talk about this, Scott, can we get, I guess I'm very concerned, because part of this discussion was in closed session, and was a confidential personnel matter. Are we allowed to be talking about this in open session?
With respect to the city manager who placed it on the agenda, the sole item you can talk about here that was discussed in closed session is what is, is the, quote, training that, the leadership development program. We're not going to get into the substantive discussions of what was discussed in that, and it's just a matter of whether the city council should authorize payment for the leadership development program. I would limit it at that and have no other discussion.
Okay.
When it comes to recommended action one and/or two, can we be specific, or we, or?
No, you should be specific, Mayor, because I think you would have to, those funds would have to be appropriated for a purpose. We have no funds appropriated in the current budget for the purpose, and that's, as Scott has described, the sole purpose of this item. But if there is ever a time that you want to discuss any of that, maybe we'll, we will have a conversation, and I might be willing even to have the conversation in public, in full public.
That'd be great.
Yeah, it would be, it would be, yeah.
I don't know why we don't do that anyways.
Is there a motion?
I, I make a motion to table this item for another meeting. I just, I don't, I don't want to do this right now. We've got a few other important things on the agenda.
Well, the only reason that I would recommend action one is because that is something that, that we agreed upon previously.
And that is happening in January, so it's kind of, we've got to get registered I'll make a motion to, oh, I'm sorry, Joe, you made a motion, I'm sorry.
Yes, I did. I made a motion to table this item. We got till January, our next meeting's in December?
Yeah.
But the problem we had last time is that the class filled up, and so we couldn't get into it.
Well, he's made a motion, is there a second?
We should have, we should have directed staff to do, to pursue that from that point on.
Okay. There is a motion, is it going to, is there a second, or is it going to die for lack of a second?
Thanks for that.
I think it died for lack of a second. Okay.
I'll make a motion to appropriate the funds for leadership training for the city manager.
It's up to $9,500, ma'am, would you include?
$9,500.
Thank you.
Second.
Moving to second, and is there a conversation? Call for the vote.
Four eyes, Marshall, Cassidy, Hernandez, Olson, and one no, Sampson.
And item number 10. Hello, Bob Mesher.
Good evening, council. Item number 10 is a, a request by Councilman Hernandez to bring back the, the decision of the last July 18 staff recommendation. The, Bob Mesher here has set up a PowerPoint to help try to explain all the numbers and stuff, so I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to him, and if you have any questions, you've got myself and Cheryl are in the audience, and feel free.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Evening.
So this topic is the mooring and lease fees for island enterprises, which was related to their waterside permit application this summer. Just to give you a little background, the staff recommendation back in July was to terminate the five leased moorings, charge nightly mooring fees for all vessels, charge a lease for the end float for the space it occupied, and waive nightly mooring fees for two glass-bottom boats, and the lease fee for the, for the end float, only if the end float was non-exclusive and available to the public. The city council at that meeting decided to terminate three leased moorings, and they granted two leased moorings, one for the 50-foot and one for the 70-foot, and granted end float lease based on an 80-foot leased mooring rate, but that the, that end float lease would be waived if it was non-exclusive and available to the public in shoreboat service. Then at the September city council meeting, the two leased moorings for the 50 and the 70-foot were rescinded, because it was determined that they weren't available for the city to, to provide, and instead granted an attachment of four vessels to the end float at the lease mooring rate for the two glass-bottom boats and two shoreboats, and affirmed that the other vessels were, would be charged at the nightly mooring fees, and affirmed that the end float lease would be based on the 80-foot lease mooring rate for exclusive use instead of the square footage rate. So we've prepared a table that was attached to your agenda item, and it's summarized here in the PowerPoint. The first column lists the type of, of fee, the second column is the staff recommendation if the float were to be non-exclusive and available to the public. The next column is the staff proposal, the financial impact, if the float were to remain exclusive for only island enterprises' use. The next column is what the council decided, and the variance between the staff exclusive use of, the proposal for the exclusive use of the float versus the council exclusive use of the float. And that was the $52,000 amount that was discussed at the last city council meeting. The primary differences between, that, that make up that $52,000 is 30,000, $28,000 of that is the end float lease rate, the city council approved based on an 80-foot mooring lease rate instead of a square footage, which staff was proposing three and a quarter, $3.25 per square foot for 1,680 square feet of float. per square foot for 1,680 square feet of float. And then at the last meeting, I mentioned that the proposed, that the council-approved fees would be similar to what was collected in last year. The next schedule that I have here on the PowerPoint shows what the fees were that were collected from Island Enterprises for leased moorings, nightly moorings, and then they had a shore, shoreboat franchise fee that was no longer paid after July 2015. July 2015 was the last time Island Enterprises paid that franchise fee. And that is the financial comparison. Do you have any questions?
And the difference being, if you go back to that last one again, that when we were getting $50,000 and $52,000 when they had the franchise fee, they weren't having to pay for the float. But then, correct? So, okay.
Right, right here, the, yeah, in the schedule here, you can see that the end float was at no charge.
Okay.
It's the second line on the bottom. Yeah, I want to point out another thing, is the last column is for nine and a half months through October 15th, so we will still be collecting nightly fees for the rest of this year, and will probably be over a total of $10,000 for the 2017.
Do you have how much harbor use fee they paid?
I don't know the exact number. It was around $100,000 a year in harbor use and admission fees that we received from Island Enterprises.
Are we able to change the vote? I mean, we voted on this, right, already? Is there a reason why we didn't pick this up before? I mean, the, the difference? I mean, so we got back down to $6,000 from, from 58, I think?
When the proposal was made at the council meeting, you did not, we did not have what would, you would call a fiscal impact. We hadn't, we weren't aware of the proposal, so we didn't have a fiscal impact for you to look at. That's the reason. It wasn't out of any, anyone's fault, per se. It's just that that's what happened, and so that's why the council decided to bring it back, just to have a discussion based upon an inquiry that the council member Hernandez made. That's, so at the time that the solution came up, it hadn't been, we weren't really aware of it, so we couldn't do a financial comparison because it came up at the meeting. So that's, that's, that's the simple answer.
This was all good faith bargaining. This is good faith work that the city was doing. So is there any historical records of how we resolve issues like this in the past? Do we have any precedent set about anything like this? I mean, is there any compromises that can be made?
This one seems unique because they were around for 30-some years. So I think this is kind of its own unique, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, this is a totally unique situation. It, a lot of the, seems like a lot of the mood is lined up here, but they didn't accept the, they didn't get the franchise, so that had a big thing to do with it.
Okay.
I don't, in my 30-some years of doing it, I don't recall anything like this before. And all these are just, you know, we were asked what the difference was, and we've talked about square footage three meetings ago, I believe that, so, and our, you know, our interpretation is there's a value there, and if Eric's, if Eric's is paying $3.25 a foot for their seating, then we're looking at that float as a...
Okay, this is an awful lot of money. Moving forward, can we go ahead and negotiate some kind of a payment plan so that this doesn't fall on somebody's...
I, I think, I think that you asked for the comparison.
That is if.
You've got the comparison. You've already voted on something, so if you want to rescind, I don't know.
That would be my question.
You have to request that.
Are we able to rescind our vote?
Yes, it's noticed that way.
Okay.
All right. Wait a minute.
So we've, we've already decided on one figure?
No, actually, this is, if, 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 looking at this, the staff has given you this information, if you decide that you want to change it, we can put it on the next agenda for the change. So yes, yes, you can do that.
Why can't you do both at the same time? I assume that was what was going to happen.
That's your, that's your expertise. I, I don't know.
So it has to be on a separate meeting? This comes back for a discussion, then gets put on the next agenda? Is that what we're...
Yes.
So we're discussing this to put it on the next agenda?
I see.
Well, you're giving us direction as to what the amount will be, and then we put it on the consent calendar or the next agenda.
With the rescind the vote and...
Correct.
Okay, and then give you direction to put it on the next, if that's what everybody...
If, if there's three votes, yes.
Well, and then, Councilman...
Yes, ma'am.
I had a discussion with JJ, too, and, and I, because, you know, we like to be fair, and this thing has gone on a long time, and you know how we are. And then JJ said, and I'm going to let JJ speak to that because it's like, well, maybe we could, you know. Anyway, please speak to, to that. You know what I'm talking about.
Exactly what are you talking about?
So, so like a compromise, or, oh, well, let's not make it the 52, but you were saying...
I, I was, I was just saying, whatever we do, we, we got to make it fair across the board. It's got to be an even playing field. So no other, no other waterside permit, or we give somebody something that we don't give to everybody else. As for the numbers are the numbers. I, I'm not, I'm not here to, to say to give a break, no give a break. The numbers are the numbers. That's what you guys...
So basically, so this potentially, we could open a big can of worms with other people who have businesses out there.
When we don't play on the level playing field, that can happen.
And, and again...
This was a unique situation.
And again, it's back to staff recommendation that we didn't do the first time, in my opinion.
We've stood by the staff recommendation from the get-go.
And that's one of the reasons I decided...
From June 6th, stood with the staff recommendation on every, on everyone.
Why aren't we following the staff recommendation by the people who work out there that know better than us? And we're back in this situation again, and yeah, that's a lot of money. We're always talking about saving money. We're talking about saving money here and there.
Yeah.
I'm just, that's one of the reasons I wanted to bring it back. Even when we did vote on that, I did say, hey, this is not right. I'm voting on something that we don't even know what it is. Cindy said it several times before, I mean, about doing that same thing.
The only instruction to staff that I gave, because I am not a subject expert in this area, I said, I don't want, I said, I told the staff, I said, I don't want you to, 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 to deal with this matter unfairly or favorably. What your job is, is to tell it the way, exactly the way you see it, based on the rules that are established, and in the end, if the council makes a determination that there are other considerations that we haven't factored in, it's their job then, it would be their job to tell us. But if you're going to have now on another agenda, which, that surprises me, too, but if that were the case, then, and if we're on consent, we would need to know, we would want to know that, what specifically you're asking us to place on that consent item so that there's not, not another, a third or fourth time of confusion on this matter.
Again, staff recommendation.
Shame on us for not following staff.
But I appreciate very much what you're saying, Richard. I think I was in favor of almost every point that staff recommendation had. However, I took into consideration the extensive number of years that the provider had provided service in, in the harbor, and Ryder, you know, like it or not like it, they did, they did not receive the contract to move forward, but I also felt that the city had some responsibility in some of the other things that happened prior, and so I really wanted to, to recognize the number of years and participation in the harbor, and that's where I swayed from the staff's recommendation.
I missed that meeting. Bob, could you bring up your last slide again? No, that one. If you take out the franchise fees, we're talking $12,000 a year in mooring fees, approximately.
Yes, that was, the point I was making the last city council was that, what the city council approved in September, the fees would be similar to what the city has collected in mooring and lease fees in previous years.
Which to me seems a fair way of doing it.
The only difference is that they were running the shoreboat, and they were given concessions because they were running the shoreboat business at the time.
And again, I beg to differ, and everybody has their opinion. Staff recommendation, they know more about anything than, and I appreciate, you know, the service, the years of service they've given to us and everything of that, that's why we have big plaques, so we could give them awards or something, but we're talking a lot of money here. Us to go get staff recommendation, not a good policy for the council, in my opinion.
And did Haley go stand in first, or do you want to talk first, Cheryl?
I just wanted to mention that what staff is recommending is no different than every other waterside permit holder is paying, and you've got much smaller businesses paying nightly mooring fees 12 months out of the year. Okay, so we're not asking for anything different than everybody else pays. The only difference is the end float, which, I'm sorry, is a valuable piece of real estate. It is, and, you know, it was there for free for the franchise business, and that was negotiated then, but there is no other waterside permit holder that has that benefit for free.
Who, this is, there's, I mean, yes, that is an end float, but is there anybody else that has a float?
Island company's got two.
There are other non-exclusive floats, yes.
They use, they use the non-exclusive float. So island company uses their floats, but they're not exclusive. Anybody can tie tie to it, drop people off, and pull out.
And they pay something for that, though?
No, because they're non-exclusive.
The, the, the key of the, the staff recommendation was that if it's non-exclusive and other people can use it, you can stay there for free. But if you're going to be just saying, this is my float, this is all my float, and no one else's, then you should pay a fee for that, because you're, because you're, you're not letting other people use it.
And that's why they came up with the 80-foot lease rate for the summertime for the float. So, I mean, they're paying for all the stuff they've got out there.
It's, it's valuable real estate, whether it's water or dry land or on the pier. That is valuable real estate. There are other businesses that would be happy to pay maybe less than them, but more than 1,500 a year for it.
How much does a repair bar get?
That is a whole nother subject.
It's valuable space in the harbor.
That isn't what we're talking about tonight. It isn't, and that is unfair to ask, because I have to go back to my office to find out what they pay. We're talking about this subject tonight.
Okay.
Okay?
And the other side of the picture is, an exclusive is exclusive. I buy a hamburger down at the fish market, I can't go sit on the tables at Eric's to eat it. It's, it, this is an exclusive, we feel this is an exclusive float, and since that float is no longer in the, the realm of the shoreboats and the franchise, then now it's a different, it's a different animal. So all we're saying, and when we did this, is that if you go 1,680 square feet, whatever it was, at $3, that's the figure you came up. You guys, you own the bat, the ball, and field. We just give you the, the information. You guys do what, you know, you tell us what you want us to do. We're, we're here to serve you. But these are the numbers. They've been the numbers since June 6th, and we've said, and said, and said, we stood by the staff report that the then harbor master, Brian Bray, wrote. We stand by it today, so...
But you've got other, you've got other exclusive floats in the harbor.
I can't hear you.
You have other exclusive floats in the harbor.
You have other exclusive floats? No, we don't. Where?
Yacht club, tuna club?
We don't tie boats to yacht clubs and tuna clubs.
They also don't have a business on it that collects revenue. That float has, collects revenue from that float.
Wet spot?
They don't collect revenue from that float. They collect revenue from the building that's on the land, and, and if you want to make that argument, then let's, let's maybe charging people in the future for that. That's up to you guys.
Can I just please hear Ms. Stickler, what she has to say? She's been waiting patiently.
Good evening. The only thing I have to say, we've said a lot, we've been going on with this for a long time, several council meetings, we've, you know, discussed this issue. We brought the float over in good faith this summer. There was a discussion on the float that we may not be able to run during the summer months if our float didn't come, so we wouldn't be able to run tours, which does generate about 100, or $95,000 to $100,000 a year for the city and use fees, just for the tours alone. So asking us to pay this other rate of square footage, it's, it's just not affordable for us. So that's all I really have to say. There's no real argument. You guys are going to make whatever decision you want. We've all talked until we're blue in the face, so I think that's it.
Thank you. Okay, can, can we move forward and figure out what we've got for our next meeting on this item and...
Give us direction.
Okay, well, obviously, we, we got to carry this forward so we can go ahead and negotiate exactly what the fee is going to be. I, I'm tending to have to go with staff on this, and if we want to change our policy in the future, that's, I think that's something that we should do. I believe we should bring it up at the next meeting and discuss it then, and then we can conclude whether or not we're going to rescind this particular, the last vote that we made on this. I think we do that right now, correct? Or do we do that at the next meeting?
The next meeting, the purpose of this agenda item as, as drafted was to...
Carry it forward.
Discuss and understand how the, how the various fees were, and then give us direction. You can do nothing at the next meeting. You can say, okay, I've got my explanation, I'm done, or if you want to have something on the next agenda where you change the previous fee, direct us, we'll put that on the agenda, and it may be helpful if we had a number so we could put that on, on the agenda, or we could have a discussion at that next meeting.
So you can vote on it, and so we don't have to continue it to another item, to another agenda at another time, so that the item is...
Yeah, I'd like to resolve it the next time. So what, what do you mean, you have a number? I thought it was $52,281?
If there's three votes to put that on the agenda at the next meeting, that's what we will do. If, if there's not, then we'll put, we can put it on the agenda, and you can determine at that meeting what that number is.
Okay, well, that's what the staff recommends, so that's what I'm going to recommend that we...
Scott, can I ask some clarity, please? On the second page of the staff report, second paragraph, it does state, "Councilmember Hernandez expressed a desire to rescind his September 5th vote and requested staff recommendation be brought back."
Exactly, but it's noticed.
So we can't rescind it at this point?
The way it's noticed, I can only go by the way it's noticed, which is comparison between the staff recommendation and the council action.
Oh, wait, there's two figures here. There's $58,939, there's $52,281, which I believe the $52,000 is the balance.
Correct. Correct, because they have, yeah.
Okay. Okay, then that's the figure that I will suggest that we go ahead and discuss at the next meeting, and that's the recommendation I'm making on this item, number 10.
I can second it, but we need three votes, right?
Does the, does, is the...
Okay, the motion is, at the next meeting, to bring back that specific number. There's a first and a second.
So we need to vote.
And then you need to vote on that, and then we can place it on the agenda. If there's not three votes, then there can be another motion to bring back another number or to bring it back to the meeting for determination of the number at that meeting.
Can I be a little bold here and offer another option?
Yes, sir.
That would be to accept the decision that you've already made, since the year's almost over, and I don't know how fair it would be to Island Enterprise to go back and say, well, now that you've been here, we're going to charge you such and such. The waterside permit was for the rest of this year. The waterside permit will be renewed for, for next year, and couldn't you then propose rates for next year using this model? That would be just another option that you could consider.
So your point is, accept what was previously approved, and then in the next year, the staff recommendation, which has been consistently since June, that that would become operative? That is, is that, am I understanding what you're saying?
For the waterside permit renewal for the next season.
So that's... So that's, and that's, that's a fair projection of, I mean, if, if it's the same rate, I would imagine it is.
Well, what it would be is, you would be determining the rate for the float as per the recommendation here, so what you would not be, what you'd be doing is, you wouldn't be retroactively going after the 52, 281, but starting January 1st, the rate for the, uh, for the float is the, I think it's 80 square feet, um, and that rate would apply for the next waterside permit.
The float was 1,680 feet, times
All right, whatever, I'm sorry, whatever.
Okay. 1,680 feet, hmm. Okay, my, my motion stands, um, and then if it doesn't pass, then we can go ahead and make another motion.
Our motion is, for the 52?
For, yes, for, um, uh, 52,281.
And that was the original staff recommendation?
Yes, sir, it was.
So there's a second, call the motion?
Further comments?
It's not easy.
Nope.
Three eyes, Marshall Sampson Hernandez, two no's, Cassidy Nelson.
All right, we're moving right on to item number 11.
I do like wobbly here, though.
Oh. Long-term rentals.
Let me, let me, excuse me, Mayor, I'm
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm still wallowing in the
This is a discussion of a proposal by Mayor Ann Marshall to evaluate the city developing a residential inspection program for long-term rentals to ensure that properties are safe from habitation, and I would like to thank Paula for supporting this in concept.
Can I ask you, does this include, uh, vacation rentals?
If, if I could, if, if, if I could, um, with your permission, with your permission, and this, um, this issue was raised earlier by, as the mayor said, by members of the community, it's also raised in the city's adopted general plan in 2013, it talks about, um, it talks about the need to preserve housing and to ensure that rental housing in the community is safe, sanitary, and decent, um, and, and what, what the general plan strongly recommends that you've adopted, and, and the previous councils, um, and state law, is that we, that we do everything we can to ensure that people rent, that rent housing, A, that they have, they're affordable, B, that it's safe, sanitary, and decent. And I have, uh, what we don't know exactly, so this proposal is to propose a residential, uh, rental program that would, that would encompass, um, any units that are rented. Um, the program designed itself would have to, there are many models in California, I know that the fire chief has gotten some examples in other, in other, um, in other cities, um, in, in, in the nation. The, the way in which the program would work, and ensuring that the program is working in a way that is legally defensible, is important, we couldn't just take the program from the city of San Jose and apply it here, but the, but the, but there is, in, in the minds of staff that I've spoken, department leaders, Ms. Cook, and the fire chief, and the building official, and as you've said, the community has said, there is a concern with the quality of, of, of rental housing, and most importantly, we're not looking at whether or not, you know, the color of the carpet, but we're looking at, is it, is there a fire hazard? Is it, is there a possibility that the ventilation system or the heating system is not functioning, so people don't, not, and I'm not saying this exists, but I'm saying that we want to be sure it, it doesn't exist, that they're not suffocated at night, as happened in the community that I lived in and worked for many years ago. Um, so, what, what, what the mayor has suggested is that we take a look at how such a program might look, be, what it would be the components of such a program, making sure that it passes legal muster, um, in terms of what we can do and can't do in terms of rentals, to ensure, again, the end product is the safe, sanitary, and decent housing for people of all income levels, uh, are, are, live in safe conditions.
Does it include vacation rentals?
Yeah, I think that's covered under a different section.
No, yeah, so let me just address the vacation rentals, in your municipal code right now, it provides that once you get a transient occupancy permit, within six months of that, there is an inspection, there, there should be an inspection by, by the city to make certain that that meets all the codes, and that every, every three years, at least every three years, they are re-inspected, and if you, they do not allow someone to re-inspect them, then they lose their transient occupancy permit. So, uh, so, again, right now, you have an inspection program for transient occupancy rentals.
This just seems like a big, big weight on, on, on the, um, the people who own houses and rent them out, and, and we got, we got to find a way to pay for this, because we can't put that on, on the people that are renting the houses, or, or we're just, or we're just inviting them to, to raise the rents, because they're just going to pass that off on, on their tenants.
And you
That is part, that is part of the
It's got to be the whole thing.
Yes.
It's the whole
Absolutely.
It's got to be the whole thing, because if we tell somebody, oh, well, you've got to redo, um, all of your air conditioning, and you got to put sprinklers in here, and it's like, well
It's not those kinds of things that we're really looking at, it's the, and, we know people that have broken windows that their landlords won't replace, now, the other thing is just the whole tenant, tenant and landlord rights that need to be known, because there's some things that, you have to make a place habitable, you know, and you can't have the bathtub going through the floor, those kinds of things, so they go in, so they go in, so anyway, all I'm saying
Got to make sure we just don't intrude, be, we're not intrusive on a landlord and, and then the tenants that are there, and forcing them to do something that they're all completely happy with, I mean, if it's, if it's something that's detrimental to someone's health and safety, that's one thing, but, uh, but if we're just forcing someone to, and if, if we're forcing the tenant and the landlord to do something that they're both happy with already, it's like, I don't know if we should go there.
Well, we, and, and Councilmember, your sensitivity, and, and that, that the mayor has expressed is exactly a sensitivity we have, while we're anxious to protect
Because I respect this, um, item.
Yeah, yeah, so what, what we, what, what we used to have, we used to have with redevelopment, with, I keep going back to it, because, you know, we had it and then it was given away, um, or was taken away, um, back in 2012, is you had monies that were collected, uh, through 20% set aside, housing monies that could be used for rehabilitation programs, and there are many successful programs in California, um, there have been in the past. So what we're going to look at is health and safety issues, that's the primary focus, how would the program operate, how, what kind of incentives can we create for landlords?
There we go.
Uh, landlords to not just have a stick, but have a carrot, that, and, how do we ensure that housing that is made, um, uh, safe and sanitary is kept affordable for the people who live and work in this community, and that's, and that's, those are all components.
So we're not talking substandard houses, we're talking habitable units?
We're, we're, yeah, any, any, any units that people would live in, we would, if they're renting it, we would be interested in seeing, to make sure that they're safe and sanitary.
Talking about a lot of manpower, hours.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
From the fire department and the building inspector.
No, that's
I mean, I like the idea, don't get me wrong.
No, no, that's the other part of the investigation, there are, there are agencies on the mainland that that is what they do, so the landlord would pay to have that inspection or something.
Yes.
Yeah, it doesn't even have to be
That could be, yes, yes, yes.
It doesn't have to be.
Yeah, it didn't need to follow around.
That's an option.
I just, I just wanted to share something that I found out yesterday, that I wasn't aware of, um, LA County Environmental Health comes to Avalon, and then they inspect all rental properties, five units or more. So they, just back in July, they inspected the senior housing project, they inspected housing up on Voodoo Lou, they inspected several properties in town, so I wasn't even aware that LA County did that. So, if LA County is inspecting properties of five units or more, and looking in their inspection list, they look for roaches and signs of rats and mice, they look to see if the electrical and the plumbing and everything looks like it's functioning, they look at windows and doors to see if they're operating safely, they look at handrails and stairs to see if they're functioning in a safe manner, so, the big question that I asked them was, so what do you do when you go in and it looks like there's, people aren't safe to live there? They said, oh, we don't ever kick people out, you have to take people to court to get them out of their unit. So I don't know whether, if our jurisdiction would be different than LA County's health in that extreme circumstance.
Yeah, there, there are, there are programs, uh, some of which I've worked in different cities, the seven cities that I've worked, where, where, but each, in each area, whether it's up north, or it's in the center, you have to craft it to what resources you have, what your needs are, and with the, Ms. Councilmember Sampson said, and, and the mayor said, that in making sure that whatever we do, it's not an intention to drive people out, it's an intention to keep them from being killed in a fire or suffocating from a heater, and what we can do is marry with your information, we might be able to marry our programs, uh, work with LA County, as you said, and thank you, Amanda, for, for doing that research, and the fire chief also, for checking other cities that do it, and, and it may be that you contract, for example, when I rented a house, with, with, I don't rent it, rent it anymore, um, up north, um, there had to be an inspection done, it was done by a licensed inspector, it gave, it cited all the defects, more than I ever, I almost didn't buy, want to, want to rent the house, or buy the house, rather, um, at the time, so it, it could be done privately, it might be done, some would be done in certain way, we don't know how the program was shaped, we just want to know if this is something you want us to do, look at, and come back to you with a plan of action, how much it costs, how it'd be paid for, what are the incentives to landlords, and what is it, and it may take community meetings to have that discussion, still let the community have input on, on what issues might exist in rental housing.
Did you, Amanda, excuse me, um, did you get any feedback from the county when they finished their, do you get a copy of the report?
I do not, the inspection results are available online, you can go into their database and look at the property they inspected, and there's a link for the inspections, and it'll show you what violations they noted and reported on.
The problem, the problem with the, the problem is, if we identify a health and safety hazard, for example, that we, we, we identify that there's a gas leak in the unit, if there's a gas leak, or we identify that the vent, it's not properly vented, or we identify that the electrical system could short-circuit and burn the house down, then there is, there's going to be some duty on somebody's part to, to, we don't want to end up what Oakland did, a few, that allowed substandard housing where people were living in downtown Oakland, only to have the whole darn thing, excuse me, I almost got into the other word, um, the whole darn thing burned down, and then everyone's going, oh, well, you know, we didn't have any responsibility, so we have a duty if we see a health and safety matter, to figure out how we get that addressed, so that the people who live there are safe, that's our purpose solely, as I understand the mayor's.
Would you like to speak on this for a second?
Hear the chief's input on this. So, we're talking, you're talking residential stuff, right, and, but we're, and we're still doing fire suppression systems on residenials, right, the city and the fire department?
Correct.
And, and we don't go back after we do the final test on any residential buildings, correct?
Correct, we put that liability and responsibility back on the homeowner.
Yeah, that, see, that one kind of scares me, once we leave, and, because I know commercially, we go back and you do your annual inspections, and you check the water flow, and make sure everything's working properly, but, kind of concerns me a little bit with the, the residence, the residential fire suppression systems, once you leave there, when you do the final, there's no follow-up to see if they're even working or if they're even connected anymore, and as we come across them before, like that.
Correct, and that, and that applies to any of the, the safety systems or safety things that are built into any residential, you know, if it has smoke detectors and carbon and oxide detectors, once it's installed, and myself or one of, uh, our crew members and the building inspector leave a residential property, that's where it ends.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
With your direction, what we would do is bring back to you a sig, some ideas, options, of what a program might look like, what it would cost, um, who it would apply to, what would be the focus of our program, health and safety issues would be the focus, and, um, how it would cost, and how, what kind of incentives we can provide to, to landlords to help them make their property safe for the people who live in this community who rent.
Also, the state of California inspects housing, too.
The state, I know, does mobile home parks, uh
They also inspect employee housing.
Yeah, well, and, 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 I, for, I'm sure for employee, we'll certainly make a inquiry to the State Department of Housing, Community Development, we'll be happy to see what resources they might be able to bring to bear, thank you, that's a good, good point.
Would this be, um, just cities in Avalon, I mean, just houses in Avalon, homes in Avalon?
Yes, yes, sir.
All homes, I mean, would it be
Well, no, it would be all rental uni, all, any home that's rented, um, it would, as we were thinking
Including private stakeholder rentals, and, okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good idea.
Is there consensus to go forward with this, and?
Yeah, am I okay?
I'm sorry, just wanted to follow up real quick, I think a lot of these questions are the same questions that myself, Ms. Cook, and the building inspector had, is, it gets very murky about what things we're supposed to look at, what things are we not supposed to look at, what if once we're inside the building, and we see something, and a duty to report, and now the liability and all that, so, I just wanted to say, these are all a lot of the same questions we have, it's a very complex issue, it'll be an enormous undertaking, uh, if it were to come to fruition, and it's, uh, these are a lot of the same questions we had.
Well, I would be curious, just, just with the, um, the checklist that the county does, as, as, to start, and see how intense or not intense that is, you know, I mean, we, I don't think we need to invent the rule, these programs are all over the place, so it's just a matter of what model might look better for us.
And that's some of the information that I provided to the city manager, was I found some that were 12 pages of things to look at, and some that were a single page.
Right, right, yes.
Sure, sure.
Now residential, didn't you say, if we did inspections on the residenials, we're not, we're not liable for that, if we missed something, if we were doing inspections?
Correct, there's a statutory immunity for failure to inspect.
It's an awful lot of gray areas here.
So, residenials, we're not liable for that?
I, I was really appreciative of the fire chief and the director, uh, community development director, planning director, to, um, who, who were said, look, hey, there's a lot of issues here, and let's be sure that whatever program we design, we factored all those in, so I was appreciative, too, of the research that they've both done, um, fire chief and then, uh, Ms. Cook, uh, so we have a wealth of information, and the question is then, how do you, how do you develop a program here locally?
I say proceed very cautiously, I'm very, I'm very
As long as the paperwork is passed, back and forth.
All right.
So is there a direction from the council to?
Uh, I would, I would appreciate a motion, because I don't want later someone to say that we weren't directed to do it, um, uh, and that there was no vote to direct us to do it, so I would kind of appreciate that.
I'll make the motion, can I make the motion since I brought up the agenda item? Okay, and is there comments from the community?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
No further comments, call for the vote.
I'm not sure about this, um, I, I, there's just too many gray areas here, I mean
I think they're going to come back and tell us.
They will?
Yeah, they're, they're doing all the homework.
I mean, I'm saying, what if somebody comes, somebody comes to your door and you don't want them there, but they, they want to come in, or, what, what about that?
Yeah, we'd work it with the
It's up to the landlord.
And the motion is on item number two of the recommended action, direct the city manager to proceed to develop a timeline work program, and evaluate how such a program might work, and the cost, and how a program would be funded.
So that's when you nitpick it, that's when you nitpick it, Joe.
Okay, well
Four eyes, Marshall, Cassidy, Hernandez, Olson, one no, Sampson.
Thank you.
Item number 13.
Item number, no, 12.
Oh, goodness gracious.
Okay, now, I asked you earlier in the week about this, because I, I work for somebody that
No, this is a transient occupancy one, this is number 12.
Oh, okay. Yeah, but I work for somebody that might have one, so, and you didn't give me the information that I can write the FPPC for an answer to this, when I asked you, so, it would be nice if you gave me some insight on what my concerns are, I mean, that is your job, so, what do I do now? Do I go sit out?
No, I don't think you, this, this moratorium would apply citywide to every, everyone, it, it applies to the public generally, anyone that wants a transient occupancy, and the law provides that council people do not have a conflict when they enact legislation that applies to every single person in the city or owners.
Okay.
Can I ask another dumb question?
Thank you, you heard it.
Isn't the planning commission agenda closed?
Okay.
And there's no meeting in December?
Correct.
And so 45 days is expired before
No, 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 okay, so let me, let me explain, okay, so an urgency ordinance is an extraordinary measure is an extraordinary measure for a city council to do, which does not go to the planning commission. So, the item before you is an urgency ordinance, that if passed by four-fifth vote, goes into effect immediately, and then 45 days after today, or at the meeting in mid-December, or if we're not going to have one in mid-December, the first meeting in December, we would come back, we would tell you what we've done, and you would have the opportunity to extend the moratorium for an entire year without going to the planning commission, and then after a year, we come back again for another bite of the apple, and say, you can extend it for another year, or two years total, does not need to go to the planning commission, if there's four votes to do this. If you wanted to adopt a moratorium, and you only had three votes, then what would happen is, it would fail here, you'd have to go to the planning commission, the planning commission would then make a recommendation that you go forward with this, they would then send it to the council, the council would, uh, uh...
Redo it.
They would have to take two votes on it, a first reading and second reading, and then it would go into effect 30 days after that. So, this purpose here is to make an immediate stop halt on transient occupancy rentals, or if you want to take, if you want to go to the planning commission, there's a whole other procedure. We were asked to place a, a moratorium on the agenda. And again, the purpose of this is to, as outlined in the staff report, there have been concerns expressed by the community on every time you grant a transient occupancy, you're taking away housing from, you're diminishing the long-term housing availability. Some of the things the council has also discussed in the past are changing the ordinance to no longer allow permits, CUP permits, but to give a license, so that would be, that would only be the individual that gets it, so that it does not run with the land, and then another consideration is, we'd have to do some legal research, but is there a way that you would like to maybe look at the existing CUPs, and say, after a certain number of years, those go away, and you have to reapply, and then you reapply for a license? So, those are the kind of things that we would be looking at during the period of the moratorium.
Yep. My, my concern with, with this is, we're losing places for year-round housing people to play. You go down, up and down streets, you see all these vacation rentals, CUPs out everywhere. It's, it's, they're running, slowly running the working people out of a place to stay, year-round, there's no year-round houses, very few, as we all know. So, I just kind of wanted to bring it up, I wanted to just bring it up and discuss it, but you want to make it a urgency, but that's fine, we could talk about it. But, like I said, my concern is, the housing thing, and the CUPs, when they sell them, does it go along if you have a CUP?
Yes, it does, right, right, under, in your ordinance, right now, it goes with the land, and so...
It goes with the land, so, that's something to be considered, too, if you sell your property, you lose your CUP.
Absolutely.
I would see, that would be one of the suggestions I would like to see, if you sold it, you don't, you go to the back of the line, you get that, you don't automatically get it, it's just the value of the property is because you have the CUP. Shouldn't have any bearing on that, I don't think, for that. But that's one of the reasons I brought this up, I'd like to hear some discussion, input from everybody else on it, but that's why I brought it up, there's a lot of year-round housing.
Okay, do we have any information for a fact that, that, um, CUPs are detrimental to, um, year-round housing? Other words, is there any kind of a study that can be done, or can we have any information at all from staff, that will tell us that, yeah, if, if we had 200 vacation rentals instead of 300, then we'd have, how many, what's the percentage of more houses we'd get out of those extra 100 vacation rentals that aren't vacation rentals anymore? Like, I'm really concerned about that, I need some factual information.
And I think this would be, this, it's, that's a very good question, in fact, it's a question that in Lake Tahoe, in South Shore, they just completed an economic analysis, and, by MBI, our contractor, same contractor in July, talking about, not only what is the impact on affordable housing, that, what is the negative impact, but is there a positive impact on the communities from, from CUPs? What are the economic benefits to, to, of having CUPs? And, and, but, of course, it was driven by community concerns that, there, and we don't, we don't know, we, we know that we have a number, we have an increasing number, as the councilman Hernandez said, but what is the real, if, for example, if the house is a million-dollar house in Hamilton Cove, or it's a million-dollar, 1.3 million-dollar house on Descanso, that, actually, it's a very nice house, is that going to be something that if not for, could that be a, a affordable housing rental? Likelihood is no, it would not, so, so, your question is really a good question, that I'm not sure we know the answer, but we would have to look at it and get an answer, before you could, before we could...
I'd, I'd like Amanda to step up, because, and we had a little chat the other day, I believe she said something about the number of CUPs has stayed pretty constant.
Yes, the number of transient rentals that are out there has hovered around 350, probably for about the last 20 years. They, I looked at the 2016 TOT report, and there were 267 properties that submitted TOT reports. Now, some of them paid $12 for the year, and some of them paid $12,000 for the year, but there were that many of them that reported. I think, to, to Joe's question, that some of the concerns are that we only have so many housing units, and that you have two different groups of people, or three different, I guess, competing for the same little pool of housing. You have your vacation homeowners, who are looking for a place for them to come have vacation with their families, you have the owner-occupied homes, and then you have properties that are occupied by year-round tenants, and they're all competing for these little pool of houses around our beautiful harbor, and so they're all competing for the same property. And I think that's what creates a lot of our challenges, how do you be King Solomon by times five, and split the baby so that we continue to support our tourism economy, but we're not penalizing ourselves by giving up too much of our housing, limited housing, to support one part of our population and not support the other?
I think that's, you just brought up a very valuable point, that even in the six years that I was a planning commissioner, and we talked about it at least once a year, is this number of, the hovering around 350 for about 20 years, because what, what we see in the community is, you see a notice that another CUP is, is coming before the planning commission, but what you don't see is, this property has relinquished their CUP. So, we're, we're not necessarily communicating when properties are being purchased and, and owner-occupied year-round, or, you know, the CUP dropping off the list, I think that's valuable.
If, if we can make it clear, if someone doesn't rent their, their transient occupancy unit for a year, it doesn't automatically go away, they are subject to revocation, there has to be a revocation hearing. Now, what, before the planning commission to revoke it, what we did do a couple of years ago, at council's direction, I think this was one of the first meetings, was, we got a list of those people that had not rented, and we send them correspondence, asking that they voluntarily relinquish the CUP, otherwise we'll come get them, I don't know what, what the final results of that were.
And that's what I was trying to talk to you about, and what was the final of that?
I don't remember how many.
Okay.
I would have to go back and look, see how many people actually said, eh, we don't want any.
But, but we could, we could do that going forward, because now we, we have the list, and it's easy enough to just say, you haven't rented it in a year, you know, done, and then it would be your direction if you wanted us to actually institute revocation hearings.
And I think the part of confusing, confusion is, the code says, if you don't use your conditionally permitted use for more than 12 months, it lapses. But, we've taken a position that it doesn't just lapse, that we have to actually actively take it away.
Right.
So, it's, if, if someone closed down their restaurant for a year, we wouldn't go revoke their CUP for their restaurant, it would just be considered that they didn't have a restaurant anymore.
Right, right.
So, I'm, that's confusing to me, but, I think to get back to, how do we be equitable in this? I, we've had lots of conversations about if someone buys this home, and we don't allow them to rent it transiently, are they going to turn around and rent it year-round? I don't believe you'll see that, because I think it's two different types of buyers. You have a buyer who's buying a vacation home that they want to use, and then you have a buyer who's buying a three-unit property because they want the income property, they're not the same group of people.
But, see, maybe there are some renters, maybe there are some people who would actually like to own property in town, rather than be renters for all their life, and then after they retire, are kicked out of town, because they can't, or, because they're no longer able to live in a rental. And so, by, by, and so, so that while there, there's positives and negatives, and as Amanda's saying, we don't know exactly what that, what, how one affects the other. Let me, let me say a positive side, the positive side of CUP is this, you have investment in the community, you have people that arguably are demanding less service, services, maybe except in peak times, they're generating TOT, and they still pay, have to pay sewer water and garbage, that if they weren't paying, even though they may not be using it, the rates would be even higher if it was only based on use, so there's, there's two sides to the coin that we haven't evaluated.
Right, of course.
Would 45 days give us enough time to evaluate that?
No.
No.
No. But, what you're required to do is, after 45 days, is report back to the council on what you're looking at, and you basically say that we need another year to fully evaluate this.
I, I'd like to look at it again, I'd like to see what, because there's other aspects, there's the vehicle aspect, I mean, with every vacation rental, there's usually a vehicle tied into it, so, which is, you know, it's, I'm not commenting on it, I'm saying that's just another, um, item that we're going to be looking at. I, I like the fact that people can, can experience the community, being part of the community, renting a house and things like that, and, and we benefit, and, but, also, we have a housing crisis right now, and I think that's with the basis of why this discussion is being brought forward, and I'm not saying I know, I'm very insightful about it, so that's why I would like to discuss it some more.
I think discussing it and doing the research is separate from an urgency ordinance.
From what?
It's separate from an, doesn't require an ordinance to have direct staff to go out there and research this issue.
I don't know.
There's not that many applications processed in the next month.
We're pretty serious about this housing crisis.
Well, and, and so, explain to us the, the deal that's in the code, and I know Cindy knows it, but about how you kind of are able to protect where you live, with you can only have so many...
We have a saturation requirement, so, what we, the code says that if you're applying for a transient rental, your property cannot be the transient rental that closes the box around a year-round tenant, to where that year-round person, whether it's owner-occupied or tenant-occupied, is completely surrounded by transient rentals.
Does that include the places to your backside?
It, it looks as, that is a, it actually says that's a factor to be seriously considered.
It's a factor to be considered.
It's not an outright ban, but it's a factor.
It's a factor to be considered.
So, you can be substantially surrounded, but not totally.
Right.
So, like, for example, Hamilton Cove is, you know, those units completely surround themselves, and they have their, their permits, but it was...
Right.
Something that was developed that helped the commission, at the time that it was developed, it was to help us to be able to say, when people say, I don't want to be surrounded by CUPs, it was just an overall look, and they just print that part of the map, that we would say, so, Annie, you have, you know, of six, of six direct houses that could touch a corner of you, they're all vacation rentals, and now the last possible one, which is number seven over here, wants one, you know, and you were in opposition to it, it'll, it gave us some meat to be able to say, hey, you know, this, this may not be a good choice to make. But it wasn't, oh, it's not a requirement, so it's not a...
No, it's just another factor that goes into the staff report.
It's a consideration.
It's a consideration.
And it does include the properties across the alley from you, includes the property across the street from you.
Yes, yes.
So, if you took out the alleys, and you took out the streets, and you just looked at the parcels that would be contiguous to you, would, would you be completely surrounded by transient?
And there only has to be one vacant spot.
That's right.
That's what we hope for.
Well, no, even that's not called out, it's just, we give the commission the one un...
I mean, un-CUP, I didn't mean vacant, I meant ones that didn't have a CUP. Well, you know, I think, as we talked about, and you're, and you're mentioning today, there's that whole thing about sunsetting the transfer upon, upon the sale.
That's what Scott was talking about.
Yeah, and we talked about that. Creating, figuring out the benefit of that, okay? The other thing we kind of talked about was the business license, maybe it's, in some way, it's a business license, not...
It's a type of license, not a land use entitlement.
Yeah, and, and then we talked, and then there was also, then the fees, that, how you would decide what the cost of those things would be, being that it's not a tax, it's a fee, but, I, I think, you know, well, I don't know, there were some, there was a couple that were just approved recently, that's when you, that's when you were planning director?
Yes, it, it was an enjoyable, delightful people, the planning commission, but it was enjoyable.
But you were, were two approved that day?
Yes, there was, there was a split-level house at the time.
And then at the last meeting, I think there was one approved in Hamilton Cove, and one of them had objections from the neighbors, and they've continued that.
They continued, Joe, Jack?
No, they, they...
They've continued that, I am to the next meeting.
They did not rule on that one, that got continued to the next meeting.
You know, I think the planning commission, you know, I'd like to give them credit, based on the public that they know, and the public that we know, that, you know, I really, I'm not looking forward to an urgency moratorium tonight, I'm definitely looking for, and it's, okay, how many times, brought up every year, but we need, we need to get into the more solid state, and, and that first, then, would go to the planning commission, they need to hash it, right?
Right, so...
So, they got their work cut out, because I think this is very, very, very important.
The vehicle thing needs to be identified, too, so, so, everybody who has a vacation rental gets one, doesn't automatically get a vehicle, I don't think that should be part of the deal. I feel guilty about saying that, because our, our public transit is so terrible right now, but, I, we just, we have to identify all these problems moving forward in succession, or, is we're going to miss something like that, and, and...
But, Joe, they don't get a vehicle. They, they don't get a vehicle with, just because they have a CUP, they're on the flats, it's absolutely not, there's no more.
If you have a garage or a drive port, like, let's say...
On the condition of approval that is applied to transient rentals, is, it does not deny the owner from registering a vehicle to their property.
Right.
They own a piece of property, they can get a golf cart, but the condition of approval is that they cannot include that golf cart with their rental, they cannot provide that rent, that card with their tenants, with their rental guest.
Thank you for that clarification, I appreciate that.
Now, we have, there's been complaints that there are people providing golf carts to these rental guests, where the owner is not allowed to provide theirs, so you see these odd little deals happening with golf carts, and that's a whole nother code issue that we have to chase.
They wouldn't do that.
So...
So, I, I think, well...
But I have one question.
Yes.
So, we've discussed moratoriums multiple times in the past, and everyone always brings up the issue, that when the city proposed to limit vehicles, 5,000 people came down here and registered for vehicles. So, how do we prevent a flood, can we, should we, will we, a flood of people rushing down here to give us $3,200 to get, apply for a transient rental permit, who weren't really interested, but they decided if they're going away, they're going to come get one?
Well, it'll just make the planning commission very busy.
But, you don't, you won't have a meeting in December, you, you won't have a meeting in December, right?
No, not until...
We have a joint meeting with you guys.
Joint, but we won't have a meeting...
For the growth, right, the growth, the policy says we can't have a meeting where we discuss new residential growth, where we can't discuss growth.
So, the first meeting they could apply for would be January?
Well, I, there's one item, it, I guess it's, there's one continued to December 4th, because that's not...
No, 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 we have a meeting on November 29th.
November 29th, I'm sorry.
Well, the planning commission just does whatever their job is.
And it's too late to...
But you're too far into the notice period, so nothing can be noticed in time.
So, we could, we could ax, we could enact an urgency ordinance on the first meeting in January, if we felt that there was going to be a waterfall of... in January if we felt that there was going to be a waterfall of applications.
Sure.
And, and what I would like to share with the council, if I have not already, I have been remiss, I have with the planning commission, is the report that MBI did at no cost to us, again, in a different place, but in some ways similar and different, in South Lake Tahoe, where it looked at all of the aspects of vacation rentals, they call them vacation rentals, not CUPs, and what the economic impacts, and what the positive impacts, and what the negative impacts, and what the impacts on affordable, et cetera. And so I'll be sure that you get that, so you can take a look at that model and see if there's anything of value that you see as value here, and we get it without having to pay for it.
Okay, so the items that you had mentioned, not excluding the things that might come up, is what we're looking at? Is that what we're going to direct staff to look at, or?
Yeah.
Okay. So we come up with some new things that are important and valid, I think we should throw those out there.
Right.
And I agree. I, I would also like to add that we go ahead and move forward on sunsetting CUPs upon the sale of a property, because the importance of that is, it, it, that will not affect any property that currently has a CUP today. Those are all grandfathered in, right?
Well, the exception, again, we have to make sure that's legal, so we have to do a little research on whether you can automatically say that it terminates upon sale. You can do that for future, well, for future uses, it's going to be licensed.
For future ones, that's what I'm saying, yeah. Right. So, but, but I'm just asking, instead of waiting 45 days to 60 days, could we go ahead and look into what that would mean to sunset those upon the sale of the property? Because I don't think it's going to affect the 267 we have right now.
And that's three of us that agree on that.
If that's the direction, we could, we would just, we would be amending, we'd be amending the, the code to just say that there are licenses rather than permits, but in order to do that, again, we have to go to the planning commission to do that. So that's, that will take some time, but if that's the direction, we can make that change immediately.
That is, in fact, the direction that three of us hold, I mean...
So going forward, what I'm hearing is that we would develop a program to where it's a license that's granted to the owner, and it's not something the owner can transfer or sell to a buyer.
Right.
Correct.
That would be a program going forward, and then we would see if it's legal for us to sunset the existing ones five years, 10 years from now.
I mean, there's probably pros and cons of this, but I, I'm asking that we, we receive that link.
Okay.
Like, can staff let us know what the pros and cons would be, and whether or not we could legally do something? I guess that's what I'm saying. I don't want to lose that as part of this discussion.
Can it be legally?
Can it be done, and what would that be, and...
And then, this is kind of off the subject, but not, that study we were doing on VRBOs and, where's that?
Oh, the host compliance?
Yeah. How's that doing? Bob, you've got a big pile of paper by you.
Yes, we're contracted with host compliance, and we've submitted our data to them. We're still in the process of reviewing what they have as far as the number of listings. The last time we talked to them, they had about 500 listings in Avalon, but most, about half of them, or, there was about 250 unique listings. In other words, the listings were maybe listed in two different websites, and, so it kind of tied in that with the figures that Amanda gave you, that we have about 267 reporting, and, so now I'm not, we'll, we'll find out the results later, but we're still looking at that.
Okay, so, and, and is there, was there a contract term limit on that?
It was a one-year contract. We signed it in June, I believe.
Oh, okay.
Coming up.
All right. Yeah, it will be, yeah.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you.
Good information. Thanks, Bob.
Okay.
Please.
I was just paying attention to the numbers. So I heard the number 350 transient rental...
Yes.
...permits. Permits.
CUP.
That was a rough number over 20 years. That we know about. Roughly. But I also heard the number only 267 gave you any money. So that's 24% of these vacation rentals that are not providing any money to the city in terms of TOT.
Yes.
And I also think I heard that there is, if you don't report any income after a year, then it goes away. So it seems to me that rather than rushing into a moratorium, maybe you need to rush into enforcing your code or your ordinance that you have and say, "Look."
Right. Yeah.
Right?
No. I think you're finding at night we're not rushing into a moratorium.
Right. But it seems like you're losing a lot of income, or else they're just holding on to this permit so that they can have it for resale of the house, correct?
Right. And that's, and that was the other part of the discussion, so let's, right now I only have to give the city $12.
Right.
Okay. So what, so, then how did, I think that's the other part of the formula, is, is maybe we make that a different number.
Exactly.
That, that is an incentive to, if you want to keep it like that, just give us so much a year, and I don't care if you have anybody staying there, because they are going to change and move in a year-round family, just for the heck of it, you know?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, you got it?
So we've really just given direction?
Just given direction.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll start studying this on staff level, but we will develop an ordinance that will go through the process immediately to deal with the license issue, change it.
The legal stuff.
Yes.
Okay, here we go. That was 12.
Nice.
Okay, now we're on 13.
Now, we're moving to the easier items on the agenda, Madam Mayor.
Can I have some clarity on my conflict of interest question?
Oh, yes. On this one here, Councilmember Sampson had indicated that he had done some work for the Blue Water Grill over a year ago. The Blue Water is owned by Rick Staunton, and so assuming that, that that would create a conflict of interest because the income was not received within 12 months from this date, that there is no conflict of interest for council, we've advised him that there is no conflict of interest for Councilmember Sampson to participate in this item. We don't even know if there's a conflict of interest because Blue Water is not proposing for this. It's the owner of Blue Water, it's part of another consortium, but because you have, he has not received income in the last 12 months.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that.
So you're in. Okay.
Bummer.
Item 13.
Mayor and council, briefly, there's two recommendations. The first is that the council could choose to express its preferred lessee. Secondly, staff is not recommending any action on the matter until further information is collected and received and reviewed, and the issue of the fuel dock lease with the island company is resolved. We have three proposers, fine people, business people, Greg and Elizabeth Winger of Island Caterers, Rick Staunton, Jim Sickes, and Caleb Linds, and Megan Wright, and Howard CDM. The council at its meeting directed staff to review design concepts with the Coastal Commission and Los Angeles Health Department, check into regarding the feasibility of obtaining an ABC license for liquor, evaluate financial information provided by the applicants, and continue to explore the short-term lease issue with Catalina Island Company. The latter, of course, has not been done. The, what the advice that we have received in Ms. Cook, if there is any structural or major change to the proposed restaurant, any major changes that changes the roof line or the roof area, the footprint, the configuration, that it would likely require a coastal commission permit or permission. If it is simply the type of structure, but it conforms to design, then we believe, based on a conversation that both the Director of Public Works and I had, Mr. Olson, Mr. Posner, a few months ago, that, that it would create a possible minor permit revision. Depending upon the level of variation, as I mentioned, it would depend on the type of uses. The, the use of, of container or modular units is not expressly prohibited by the Los Angeles County Health Department, according to the information that we received. Obtaining an ABC license would be the business of a successful applicant. All of you know how that works. It's a lottery, you can buy one from someone else, or, and it's, I'm sure it's not cheap. All of the applicants provided financial information to the finance director, and I appreciate his, his work in reviewing very quickly what information he had. He noted that there is some information that he did not have from some of the applicants at the time. I believe you have in your, in your packet, letters from some of the applicants who said that they, they do believe that they have financial information that would be useful for, then they can make it available. The, the big sticking issue that, that the city attorney, the chief administrative officer and I have talked about, and I believe I would say this with, with their concurrence as well, is the issue of the length of the lease with the island company for that section is, is a, is a short-term lease, and we do not see how the council, you know, hindsight's 20/20. We, we, this was an issue we, all of us, going way back, probably should have picked up, how we can grant a 30 or 35-year lease with a three-year lease with the master holder or the property owner. And there's also been some questions raised about title to that property, which I know that is another subject for another session. So, based on all of those reasons, we would like to continue work on the financial side to get all, make sure we have all the financial information available from each of the applicants. We can evaluate those. We may likely need, or would likely need, some design, or at least some, to see if it's going to, if the proposed project's going to conform with the existing approved design, or it's going to be different. And, and, and we believe that the item is not ready for, for direction to the city attorney to prepare the lease, based upon principally upon the lack of information in some areas and on the issue of the island company lease. That's it.
Okay. So if I may ask, because Mayor Protem, you wanted on this, that it's on the agenda, are you saying that, I guess I'm curious why you feel something could be done this evening? Or what should be done?
As I understood the discussion with the coastal commission, that one of the projects was designed as approved, and the only thing that wasn't designed into that project is the roof deck. And they could construct the building and not include the roof deck at this time, and go get a minor modification change to include the roof deck at a later time.
Yes, yes, that's our understanding.
The other two, I believe, will need to get a full CDP, which is going to be six months to a year, basically. And if we have a desire to get a restaurant out there, and if we have the ability to get a restaurant out, if we have the ability to get a restaurant out there sometime in the next nine months or 10 months, otherwise we would look at another, you know, year.
Okay. So, but with regard to, I guess you want to call it brick-and-mortar building, which I think that other building was steel, and then coated, if, I don't know what the difference would be if the container or what, or a pre-modular building fit on that, what would be the difference?
We, we do not believe that there is a substantial difference, as long as the design of the structure conforms with the approved plan, whether it's in fact in most structures, commercial structures. I'm not a builder, but I've been around it a little bit. Burn on Mr. Many structures are steel structures. They have steel framing, they don't use wood framing anymore in commercial. And so the question is, what is it going to look like? What's the shape? What's the roof line? I agree with Councilman, with Mayor Protem, that when we spoke to the coastal commission, they said that a roof, if the building conformed with what the proof plan, and it was simply a roof deck that didn't change the view, that it would be a minor permit at most. That's true. What we don't know is if they proposed a modular unit, I mean, I'm calling a modular rather than a container, like modular housing, but they're modular units, that if it conformed to the design and, and general appearance, that what, we don't, we're not sure that there's a difference, but we'd, we'd have to verify that with the coastal commission based upon what we would receive in, in a design of that thing. So we, I'm not sure it's a big issue unless it's, it's so different that it doesn't conform at all with the appearance of the structure.
Okay, then let me ask another question. Based on, then, what you know, you would be able to make a recommendation on one of these three tonight?
Yes.
Okay. And...
I would not recommend that we start drafting lease. I would recommend we start negotiating the lease.
Okay.
Because we do have the issue with the island company and the lease that we have with that property, too, that's got to be resolved before we execute the lease.
But if somebody comes in and says, let's say negotiated with me, I was on here, and I said, "Well, I said I wanted a 10-year, but I'll take the risk and take a five." I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, if you're going to negotiate with one, you need to negotiate with them all, and see, because you might find that somebody wants to, I mean, I'm just talking off the top of my head.
I just, I don't believe that the other two restaurants that's proposed fit the footprint and the height envelope of the proof plan.
Do, how do we know that? Have we seen anybody's stuff?
Just the renderings that were in there, that we've received.
Does it have height and weight in there?
I think, I think the mayor, let me just weigh in with a comment. I mean, you have a set of building plans that are ready to go. They've been plan-checked, they are ready for a building permit, okay? And you have a coastal development permit that is, that is ready to go for that set of building plans. Anything else is not ready to go. You at least have to do engineering. If you had a container, you have engineering for that site, and you have a set of building plans that you would have to develop.
And what do you think the timeliness would be if everybody was, was like, on the spot?
If you built exactly what we designed and delivered that, I mean, it would be negotiate the lease, and at that point, once you have that, it's, could be nine months, 10 months, you could be...
And what, okay, and what about under the...
Because they'd be ready to, to take a permit out once they have a lease.
Right. And what about with the other scenario of something that's more mobile, or not mobile, but...
Modular.
Modular.
So, it's our understanding that you would need to go back and amend the coastal development permit, and is also our, there would be, have to be a set of plans, and likely that could be done pretty quickly, but still, to develop that set of plans, put it through a plan review, it could be three, four months in that, you know, as you're going through that coastal development permit, so you're adding that time on. But also that construction, it seemed, was rather quick with a container, so, you know, that could converge in the same timeframe.
So Bob, if, if I may, Ms. Madam Mayor, if, if, if a person who proposed a modular said, "We're going to basically conform, we're going to go to, and conform that to what the design that's already previously been approved, except that it's going to be steel inside instead of wood, or whatever product, other product was used," then the closer that they get to the original approved design, the less time it's going to take, I, I would, I would think, because it wouldn't, but if it...
Then it's not the coastal development permit.
Yes.
It's just getting your plans and getting it through our building division.
But as I understand it, we don't know that yet.
No, we don't know it.
No. I mean, we're talking real general here, but I don't know.
And maybe that, it may be appropriate to take three proposals and go visit Mr. Posner and say, "Do you, as coastal commission, have any problems with these three? Can we, can, can we go forward with these?" And that be information that we could bring back to the council.
I thought, I thought we were going to do that before we came back to this.
We don't have all of the specifics. We don't have all of financial information. We don't have the lease information, and plus, we haven't had that, that much time, Ms. Cassidy, to, to, we don't have complete drawings of what, what would be proposed by the parties, and that's part of the, the vetting process, because there are a lot of other things that this staff is doing as well.
I don't want to rush this process too much here. We've got three good bidders on this, on this process that we're already, they're already in, they've already, they've already made, made their commitments, and I think we need to consider what, what everybody's doing here. It's not going to move that fast anyways. We have other things that we need to prerequisite before we move on to choosing somebody to go as an occupant, so I don't want to move too fast on this.
Well, and based on that, I don't remember exactly the start dates that everybody was proposing, and that was based on us being able to kind of go, you know, move on down the road, while already we've stopped, not stopped, but we're already somewhat delayed. the road, while already we've stopped, not stopped, but we're already somewhat delayed. Um, and I, but I guess, I mean, yeah, I don't think, I could not choose one today in a million years, I, but I think that we need to come back, because I think that one of the things we said, that we weren't gonna look at a 35-year lease. And seems like that was a conversation before. And so I, that would be curious to see, see what kind of negotiation could be done with regard to that.
Well, I think one of them has a, their proposal is a 15-year lease, one is a 25-year lease, and one is negotiable five years minimum. So the renewal options are, are sort of a separate item, but you, you know, we do have their proposals to us at however many years.
Was it 25 with two fives?
Yeah, one with 25.
Right, right.
One with 60 with two 10s.
The 25 with two fives was our original.
Um, do we have that, do we have dimensions on the other two proposals, the modular proposals?
Have you seen them? I haven't. I haven't seen those, sir.
Um, I think, I think one of the proposals had a couple of containers, so, I mean, it was almost the same footprint, but I think they were basically gonna set the containers right on the slab, and then make the hookups, and then try to make a facade out of that, which, you know, other companies have been successful around, you know, even in Long Beach with that.
Yeah.
Made something that was very nice out of it.
Do we have enough to take to check?
We do have dimensions on one.
Yeah.
Do we have enough to take to, Mr. Posner? To get us a quick review, as to what the process would be to build the three?
From, just the response that he made by email, he just said if we did that type of setup, that it would require, you know, addition, an amendment to our coastal development permit.
And all three proposals do have dimensions.
And then what, how, what, would there be any delay in the infrastructure that is, we've already got all our water, gas, uh, our grease trap, all set up right now, right? So...
And so there would probably, likely have to be modified with the containers, you know, there'd be some type of hookup, but, you know.
Okay, so it can be done.
Not that difficult, yeah, it's, even if they had to cut the slab and, and modify that, or it could be on, uh, could be on the top of the slab and covered up with a deck, or whatever, you know, there's different kinds of ways you could approach that.
Okay, thank you, Bob. And Megan, you wanted to say something?
Um, I just wanted to say that the, we do, yeah, we do have a, we do have the square footage or the footprint. The reason I chose the architect that I chose, and he's kind of partnering with me in the project, is because he's worked with now three cities on building these steel craft units, it's the one in Long Beach, he's doing one in Garden Grove as well, and he assured me that he's worked with the Coastal Commission, and he's, he, he knows that the process won't, won't, I mean, it's his word, but he knows that the process won't take too long, and that's exactly why I've chosen that concept. Um, again, like I stated last, the last time we were up here, um, we are willing to negotiate, we are willing to build a building, but, uh, we'd prefer to do it as soon as possible, so everyone's starting to make money quickly.
Right.
Um, the concept, the modular concept of the shipping containers, a lot of them you see do have the industrial look, but also the facade to be done can be stucco, it can be wood, it can, it can really conform to the casino building and the, the current structure that's there. So, it's a great option if we wanna get it done quickly, um, and start making money this summer. But if not, I, I know that my party is willing to build a structure, it just will take a little longer.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Whenever we can do.
With that?
Whenever we can get it built. Uh, if, if we can take the, the existing submittals to Mr. Posner and get an idea from him, Hollings is gonna take to get them approved, and talk about this on the 7th.
We can talk about it again, yeah, for sure, but...
Bob, for it.
Whenever the next meeting is.
Yeah, we'll make, we'll make contact with him, uh, we can, we can make contact based on what information we have, Councilmember.
Fifth.
You mean on the fifth, I think.
Yeah.
Give us a little time.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And, and, and everybody is proceeding along with Bob for what his needs are, to get all the information that we need, right, from the financials and all that stuff, that's all, moving forward.
Yeah, and I think that, Mayor, thank you, because I think it's incumbent on those people who are proposals, with, we do have information from one, wanna be sure that whatever information that we have all, not saying you haven't or anyone hasn't, but just be sure what Mr. Mesher needs that he gets, so that he can compare the apples to apples.
And, and that, if can happen, should happen in line with what we're gonna get on the 5th.
Yes, ma'am.
Because if you find out that somebody can't play anymore, you know, I mean, we, that, that kinda changes things as well.
Well, I think we've received financials from two now.
Yeah.
So, we're moving that way.
Just hold of a finger, Bob.
I received financial information from all three proposals. Uh, the, the information that I have, there was one proposer that, that was very obvious that they have the capital available to start up and construct the business and to keep it running. Uh, the other two had sufficient finances based on their, their income to, to keep a restaurant going, but I wasn't really seeing how they would have sufficient funds to construct and start up a new business. One of them expressed that they would, they have assets available right now that they would be able to, to sell. And that if they were to, to sell that, that they would have sufficient funds for that, or that they would partner with other investors.
Okay.
So that would be important, Bob, would it not, information, then, for, when it comes back to the council, that we, you have a comfort level with whatever information of that information?
Right. Okay, thank you. Okay.
Is that directed?
You feel it directed? Okay, item number 14. And this is Ms. Ratty? Mrs. Ratty?
Um, there are three resolutions before you this evening, and this is on our next general municipal election, which is on Tuesday, April 10th of 2018. Um, in the first resolution, it's just calling the election, and I already gave you the dates of that, but it also stipulates in it what seats are up, and which is the mayor's seat, and that's every two years, and then Councilmember Sampson and Councilmember Cassidy's seats will be up, and that was for a four-year term. We will not have the city treasurer on this one, 'cause she was on the, the last one. It also calls out, the polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and please bear in mind that we switched that a couple of elections ago, but I just wanted to remind you of it, because when, like, when we have the county elections, they come over and they run it, the polls are open till 8:00 PM. But we publicly noticed that repeatedly through the, um, process up to the election. And then it also calls out the stipend that we pay, it's 125 for the inspector of each of the precincts, and that's the person that's in charge of running everything at the precinct, and then the $100 for each clerk that works those long hours, and they get an additional $25 for coming to the training. Uh, the second resolution is LA County, um, we're asking them to render some services to us. It's things like the roster of, of all the voters, they also provide the polling places to us, and, um, signature verification, particularly as, um, the ballots are rolling into us, and then after the election, all our provisional voter votes, and that's very invaluable service to us, and they work very well with us, and they make the process painless. Uh, the third one is the regulation of the candidate's statements, and this is the one where you just have to make the, the decision of who pays. On the sample ballots that come out in the mail, the city pays, we are required by law to have two languages, the English and Spanish in it, and the city pays for everything that's in this, both translations, or I should say, the translation, but it, as a candidate, if you put the optional statement in this pamphlet, you have to decide right now, and that's what you need to decide, if you're gonna make the candidate pay for that translation, as well as for the printing of it in here, and not the, the general public.
So, so that the primary language, or whatever, that is English, that is automatically printed, it's just if we wanna pay for the translation and just...
If you do a statement, you're gonna have to pay for the translation, for the person that, yeah, it has to be a professional person. Uh, we've charged $175, um, the last few elections, and then if there's extra, we've given it back, or if we needed more, so I've upped it, because they couldn't, the Martin and Chapman could not give me an exact price yet, so I just upped it to $200, so if, um, if I were a candidate and I wanted a statement, I would have to, the time I turn in my papers, I would have to pay $200, and if I can give you a rebate, great, if I have to charge you more, I will.
May I ask a question? Um, so, the ballot statement is printed in English for all candidates at the cost of the city, but if, no?
Not the statements.
The statements are not?
Statements, as, as soon as you would say, David, that you're gonna do a statement...
Yeah, I'm, I'm not running, but, no, but I understand.
You would have to do, um, pay for the translation, and then, as well as the printing of English and Spanish in here.
So that, so that for people with substantial resources, having a statement which would be informative to the public is a burden that they would have to bear, uh, as well as someone without substantial resources, um, and somehow, it, it would seem to me that if people are choosing to run for public office, that their statements, whether it be in English or Spanish, should be something that should be borne by the poll, I don't know, and, and that's my old city clerk hat.
But we have, um, a process that if you were unable, or if it was gonna be a strain on you to pay for that, you could come, and that's just with me, the city clerk, and...
Oh, excellent, oh, good, I didn't know that. Excellent. Thank you, Denise, thanks very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, and we have to come up on the...
So I guess I just need to know if you wanna leave it the way it's been, where the candidate is responsible to pay for the translation and pay for the printing of their statement in the voter pamphlet.
Okay, and what's the cost for the printing? I see the cost of the translation, but what's the cost of the printing? I missed something.
It's like the $200, Annie.
All in, all in that? Oh, okay.
She did raise it.
We did, yeah.
175.
So, it, so basically, you're looking for a motion to, um, to adopt all the resolutions, and then direct me on the third one for, on the candidate's statements, how you'd like to proceed.
I'll move, adopt all resolutions, and all the candidate's statements are paid by the candidates.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Talk to the vote.
All ayes. Thank you.
Okay.
We're doing the hospital board before we go?
Sure.
Hospital.
Go ahead, Ollie.
Oh. That's at the top of my page. Can we get there? Oh, thank you. Um, I would like to call to order the Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees meetings Tuesday, November 7th at 9:24. Could we have a roll call, ma'am?
Trustee Cassidy, here. Trustee Hernandez.
Here.
Trustee Marshall.
Here.
Trustee Sampson.
Here.
And Chairman Olson.
Here. Do we have any announcements? Not looking so.
I have none.
We have any written communication?
I have none.
You do have a written comment, uh, that was in electronic mail by Mr. Harrell of the island company, discussing a comment that was made probably by mistake in the CEO report, um, that stated that the island company, um, didn't, was not interested, or would not donate land for the hospital. Mr. Harrell indicated, and I am not his spokesman or a paid, uh, person of him, as you know, um, but I'm just saying that, uh, he indicated that the company is, is still considering, um, working with the hospital board to develop a site, so that was just the only written communication that you received.
I also had a discussion with Mr. Rusak about the same subject, and there were some other issues just besides land, but that's okay. Um, presentations, nobody's participating, time for oral communications. Members of the public may address the Board of Trustees at this time. No action will be taken on non-agenda items at this meeting, speakers shall limit their discussions to three minutes. And they're just run, yes, ma'am.
We've already approved number seven.
It was on the consent calendar, and we approved it. It was on the consent calendar, we, um, and we approved it.
Okay.
Well, I'm glad you spent the night with us.
Sorry, you guys. Sorry.
I apologize. Uh, wow, I'm just, okay. Did you have comments or anything?
Yes.
Well, right now, we're in a hospital meeting, so you're not gonna be able to do that, right, while we're talking hospital.
I will be right back. Certainly. Um, consent calendar.
There are three items on the consent calendar, actions from September 5th, 2017. Uh, number two is the CEO's report of October 2017, the CFO's, um, narrative analysis for September 2017, and item three is recommend, making the recommendation of one director to the board, and that is Dr. John Christian Fox.
Anybody wanna remove any consent items?
I'll make a motion to approve items one, two, and three.
Thank you, second?
I'll second, or you seconded, whatever.
I'm calling for a second.
Oh, I'll second?
Thank you. Uh, any discussion? Call for the vote.
All ayes.
Do you think there's a, is this okay if this woman comes up and speaks for a second?
You can reopen the, the council meeting, it's still, uh, in session, so you can go back and ask her for public comment, or comment on item number seven.
Okay.
Okay. General business, there's none, and members report?
Nope, sir.
None?
None.
Then we will adjourn.
Okay, thank you.
Back to the council.
I'm Laurie Kingston, I've had a condo here for about 15 years, I don't know you guys very well, but I'm Laurie, you probably know my wonderful son here, Eric, uh, if you have any daughters or granddaughters, he's educated, he's a big... Anyway, um, I'm here to discuss the cannabis issue here. Uh, I own Mavericks, uh, grow houses in Temecula, I have a legal medical dispensary, I'm also a registered nurse, and a Realtor also. Uh, I didn't get into it for a money reason, as a lot of people did, I did it for, specifically for medical reasons, because I myself have a spinal condition. I do, thank you, I am short. Um, I realize that you guys only wanna have one dispensary on the island, but I did wanna bring up some facts here for you. Um, Sunset Beach is a town I used to live in, we have a population of 500, uh, five, excuse me, 5,000 people there. We have seven deliveries. You guys have a population of about 49, uh, about 4,000 people?
4,000.
Give or take. And like I said, they have seven deliveries, plus they can also choose from the Huntington Beach deliveries from the town directly next door. Uh, Lake Arrowhead, a place I have a, a cabin up at, we have a population of about 11,000 people. We have two stores and six dispensaries, because it's also a tourist area. You people here are gonna be expecting 700 to, 700K to a million tourists a year, and having just one store isn't going to cut it.
Any stores?
And also, um, as far as being able to supply you, as far as the law goes, um, one person cannot do the testing, the growing, and the selling. It all has to be separate entities, and I just wanted to let you guys know that, and I would hope you would, uh, consider my son, uh, for a second dispensary here, because we do, we really, uh, excuse me, my mouth's getting a little bit dry here, a little nervous up here. I'm not used to touch public speaking, my husband usually does this for me, but, um...
You're doing fine.
A lot of people here, like you said, is, we do a lot of good services for our customers. Um, people who are terminal with cancer, they get free, they get free compassion, as we call it. Veterans get 20% off, thank you very, very much. And I would like to be, and also, as my son, um, we are growers, we know how to grow very, very good medical cannabis, which we, um, supply to our store in Temecula, and my son and I would also like to be able to teach people here how to grow their own, because it's very, very expensive, you know, to, to be able to go out and buy, and having one dispensary, well, then you're talking monopoly. They can, they can just, they can just, sky's the limit of what prices, and believe me, there are some dispensaries that are charging almost $100 in my area for an eighth. So, there's no, there's no cap on prices, and having just one, you have a monopoly. And I just don't really feel that that's fair, especially with the amount of people that you are gonna be helping coming to this town.
Yeah, Mrs. Kingston, I do appreciate your comments, and we have been discussing this for a number of months, and, um, the thing is, we, maybe you've had a house here for 15 years, but maybe you don't realize how conservative the town is, and how when there was initiative on the ballot for a dispensary, it lost by 66%.
Well, that's why we wanted to just do a delivery service. Well, that's why we wanted to just do a delivery service. We don't really want a dispensary.
Right. Well, and I know, but you've used the word dispensary a couple times, but I didn't think you meant that.
Well, I was basically talking about my town on the main one.
Right, right. But however, this is a big step for Avalon, and what we've decided to do is we're going to do it for the one year, evaluate the numbers, evaluate the need, and look at that, and then that second year. But going forward, we're being... Because the town is very concerned. They come out and grow, so to be concerned about this whole cannabis issue, so we are taking it slowly.
Well, I can understand that perfectly because being a nurse myself, I never believed in cannabis...
Yeah.
Cannabis smoking. I was a nurse. And when I was basically diagnosed with a very debilitating spinal condition, doctors put me on morphine, muscle relaxers, you name it. I was a walking zombie, 90 pounds. I had to find out all this about myself, using my own medical knowledge, to do the research for myself.
Yes.
And find out who... What you need to do and how you need to grow the perfect product to help you with your specific medical problems.
Right.
And we do provide a good service. You know, our family does. My son does. My son wants to live here the rest of his life. We are a very conservative family. Like I said, I'm very down on drug use.
Right.
But the way I look at it, using a little bit of cannabis is a lot better than loading yourself up on morphine.
Yeah. Well, and if... And who knows? I mean, we don't... You know, we'll have an application process. We're in the process of working on that right now when that RFP comes out. I have spoken to your son. We had a nice meeting. But for this...
Well, that's all I want to do. I just want to have a fair chance. I want us to be considered. I want my son to be considered.
Yes.
And that's all I ask, is just a fair chance.
And who knows? Whoever gets it might be looking for a cannabis supplier, so...
That we find you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to say happy Thanksgiving to everybody because we're not going to be seeing you till after Thanksgiving because I'm sure everybody else will be asleep when we come back to wish Tony good night. Okay, that's it?
No, I got to announce it.
And we have five closed session items. First is conference with real property negotiators. This is 206 East Whitley. We have two items with the city manager, performance evaluation, conference with labor negotiators. We have two items with anticipated litigation. Item number one deals with the E-Bus company, so the entire council will be discussing that. The second item is a discussion of options for the Casino Point property. So council members Hernandez and Cassidy would be recusing themselves from that item. And the last one, conference with real property negotiators. Again, this is the Thailand property in and around Casino Point because it's owned by the Catalina Island Company. Council members Hernandez and Cassidy, because they receive income from the island company, will be recusing themselves for that. So they got to go home earlier than everyone else.
Madam Mayor, I have a statement on one of the items that I am reluctant to make, but I feel compelled to make. I've alerted the city attorney. I've alerted some of you in relationship to that item of my concerns. Those issues have not been addressed, so I feel compelled that I have to address them here. I had asked that the item on performance evaluation and compensation be held over due in part to my absence and the fact that the memo from the city attorney indicating that it would be on the agenda, I did not receive because of... I was on vacation and did not read it until more recently. You may ask why. I'm not prepared for that meeting, and I think, one, if it's about you or me, that one should be prepared. Secondly, I have lingering doubts about the process that was used and the fact that I believe that it was not a reliable process, and I believe that there might have been, by one member, retaliation for acts that I'd performed as... In doing my job as city manager to ensure proper procurement practices. I had bring... I brought these matters to the attention of the city attorney's office since July and to some of you members individually, and I have not gotten adequate answers or explanations that would lead me to any other conclusion. And unfortunately, it pushes me to seek remedies since I can't get answers in other forms. So I will not participate in a closed session about performance or compensation where one member that I believe has retaliated against me participates. And I think it would have been wise that you all had been briefed on the concerns that I've been expressing since July.
Okay, well, we will go into closed session. So if, in fact, that one council person that you're talking about is in the room, you are saying you will not participate?
I think it's inappropriate for me to participate. Given the concerns that have not been expressed, I believe that the issues that I have raised are serious. I believe that the issues of retaliation are serious, and I believe that had the job been done before, that this would not have been an issue. But it is not. I'm not seeking problems with the council in general, but I think that the issue has to be resolved. And I've told individuals that if this matter moved forward, as was the insistence of Mr. Olson, that I would make a statement. So it is what it is.
Okay, thank you.
We're going into closed session.
Talking about the little boys' room, are we?
Yes.
Dudley?
So you're going to report out on anything?
Yes, I am.
Oh.
I rejected it.
And we're back from closed session?
And in closed session, the council rejected unanimously rejected bids for the offers for sale of purchase of the Whitley property.
Oh, 160, 170 pounds?
Whatever.
Okay, and meeting's adjourned. Good night, Tony.
Good night, Tony.